Okay. We'll call the regular meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission to order at 9:05 and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Director Elliott, are there any staff announcements or agenda changes today?
None, Madam Chair, there are no staff announcements or agenda changes, but in my presentation, I would apprise the commission of information that I just passed out this morning, that we received yesterday, that's pertinent to the item before you this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we will open the public comment period. Is there anybody here who would like to speak to something not on the agenda today? And Annette, are you there?
There's no online public comment at this time.
Thank you. Okay, seeing none, we'll close this portion of the agenda and move on to our consent agenda. We are going to need to remove a few items, a few of the previous minutes, September 14th, October 11th, October 12th, and October 18th from the consent agenda because we don't have three commissioners here today who are in attendance at those meetings.
What do, how do these minutes get confirmed then?
I, they, these two are going to watch those videos.
I, split them up.
Thank you.
Yes. Still remaining on the agenda are the September 28th, November 9th, November 29th, and December 14th minutes.
How about October 18th? October 18th. You pulled September 14th, October 11th, October 12th. Did you pull October 18th or exactly?
No, no, because we had three commissioners present.
18th, November 9th, November 29th, and December 14th.
Correct. Is there any member of the commission or the public who would like to remove another item from the consent agenda today?
Nope.
Seeing none, we're open to discussion, corrections or motion.
I move that we adopt the minutes, accept the minutes for the stated times.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have to abstain from some of the minutes because I was not a member up until, all the way through October 18th. So I will abstain from those. And then I will also abstain from November 29th since I was absent, but vote aye for November 9th and November 14th.
Perfect. Hopefully somebody got that. So.
And I'm abstaining from all of them. And I'm going to abstain from.
December 14th.
December 14th. And aye on all the others.
Thank you. So all of the minutes are approved with at least three commissioners present for each of those meetings. A couple of abstentions and a, the absence of a fifth commissioner on all of them. Thank you. Happy to get those off my pile. And we will move on to our item one, the continuation of the 2023-074 Appeal of Administrative Use Permit, AUP 2023-040. And Director Elliott is going to take it from here.
Before we get into that, I'd like to disclose that I did have contact with one representative from each of the sides. Last meeting, I asked each side to provide certain types of evidence and my contacts had to do with that, that request.
Okay.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, Deputy County Counsel, members of the audience. On February 20, oh, February 8, 2024, this item was continued to Planning Commission meeting of March 14 today to allow for additional information from both the applicant and appellant.
Can we turn up the volume a little bit, Susan? Can everybody hear him?
Nice to have consensus.
Yes, it is.
Are we good? Testing, testing. Okay, good.
Is that better?
Is that better? Oh yeah, this is better. I can hear it. The Planning Commission had testimony from residents and the appellant about the health risks of locating cellular towers in residential neighborhoods and its negative impact on property values. On the issue of lowering property taxes, the Planning Commission advised meeting attendees of the need to provide verifiable evidence that are localized in the Valley Springs community or to the county in general related to lowering of property values. As of the date of writing of this staff report, staff did not receive such evidence in writing. However, since the staff report was published, we have received many pieces of information that have been forwarded to the Planning Commission and I hope you all in receipt of them. And we've also posted any information that we received subsequent to the preparation of the staff report on the department's website. As part of this update, we are updating the findings in the staff report related to approval of an AUP. The reporter had indicated that the project was not located within a community plan area. In fact, the project is located within the Rancho Calaveras Cheni Lindt Community Plan Area. That section of the staff report has been revised to address the community plan policies related to land use and the proposed telecommunications facilities. Ultimately, the Planning Commission would need to determine whether the specified findings in his own code have been met. To reach a resolution on this project, it is within the purview of the Planning Commission to add conditions of approval in areas where health concerns related to this project have been discussed by members of the public. So some of the comments received by the time the staff report was published were February 12 of 2024 from windchime.com. We attached that message to the staff report that the Planning Commission received. February 13, information about inverse condemnation, court rules, cell phone tower, neither are taking no license. We attached that message to the staff report. February 20, from Michelle Dickey, objection to telecommunications tower at 5992 Clement's Place. February 26, myvalleysprings.com, concerns about monetary cell tower plastics as photo evidence were attached. The much talked about alternate site analysis was one of the contentious items in the Planning Commission meeting of February 8. We've attached that analysis and give, provided a description of what the applicant, the reasons why the applicant eliminated certain sites and went with this particular site. Now, on some of the subsequent information that the Planning Commission received, one of the property owners is denying the fact that she was actually contacted about the use of her property, et cetera, et cetera. The other section of this staff report that's different from what the Planning Commission saw the last time were some of the findings and I'm on page three of the staff report. I do not want to belabor this process by kind of regurgitating what the commission might already have. I would just like to focus more on some of the information that we've received since the staff report was prepared and more specifically, the information I passed out this morning, which we received from Vertical Bridge, from an email from Bill Lewis, which I passed out to the Planning Commission this morning and I left copies out for members of the public. And it said, "We spoke to T-Mobile and to comply with CPUC requirements for high fire zone areas, we're requesting that a generator be included in the SOW. Please see the attached update, updated plans." I planned, I gave those plans to the commissioners. I put some out there for the commission to consider. When I received that communication, I looked at the environmental document that we prepared. I am not convinced that when the application was received and processed and the negative declaration was prepared, that we anticipated the placement of a generator. The generator adds a noise component which we may or may not have analyzed. I am hoping that Vertical Bridge this morning would be ready to make some determination as to whether or not noise analysis have been done or not. If not, I think this would require us to actually take another look at the environmental document that we prepared, getting some detailed information on the generator, trying to make an assessment of the level of noise that would be generated, et cetera, et cetera, since it had not been part of our understanding from the very get-go. So this is a new dimension that came to us last evening. Besides that, all the information that we've received have been posted on our website. There are so many of them that bringing copies in here would, you know, require me to get a hand truck to move them. And I think everybody knows what information they've provided to staff. The website is there for additional information. If Deputy County Counsel feels that we need to, you know, make copies for members of the public on items that they had made comments on or the other items that they may not be aware of, what other people made comments for, then we would have to go and, and make copies for everyone.
I mean, the question is about making copies of incoming materials if they were, I would say if the. If they were posted, I would say 72 hours or more, then I wouldn't worry about it if they were posted in the last 72 hours. If there's anybody here who would like a copy, I would recommend offering an opportunity to make one. I would also just note that the project description for the sequel document does not include a generator. It expressly excludes the generator. So at the very least, I think that before finalizing a decision on the sequel document, staff would need to analyze the change in the project description and whether or not that requires recirculation. Thank you.
Thank you.
So my plan today, just so everybody knows, is to start with the presentation by Vertical Bridge. Since at our last meeting, the members of the public and the appellant all had opportunities to speak. You will get another opportunity today. Everybody will get.
May I interject? We did have a presentation from the planning director, but we did not have opportunity to ask questions of the, of the planning director at that last meeting.
If you could just wait one moment while I finish. Where we're going with this, so everybody kind of has a sense of where we're, we're headed. So, so we will see the presentation by Vertical Bridge. The appellant will have an opportunity to speak again. The public will have an opportunity to speak again. At any time during that, the members of the commission will have opportunities to ask questions or to, to bring somebody back up again to ask additional questions. So we're going to start right now with an opportunity for the commissioners to ask any questions of our planning director and then I just want to give you guys a chance to get ready to do your presentations since that'll be the first thing. All right? So any questions for Gabriel?
Surprisingly, I do. So one finding that's necessary for the approval of an administrative use permit is that proposed activity will not potentially affect the safety or general welfare, correct?
Correct.
And you notice that the, the application, the answer to question 15 on the application indicates there are residential buildings within 500 feet in all four directions.
Absolutely.
In your proposed AUP, condition 1-5 says, "To minimize the aesthetic impacts of the project, the telecommunications facility shall be stealthily designed and constructed as a pine tree or other tree species predominant in the, in the project vicinity."
Absolutely.
It's, what, what do you, what meaning do you give to stealthily designed?
Well, in this particular case, it doesn't mean that the tower is going to disappear, but I think there's quite a drastic change from looking at metals and antenna as opposed to looking at something that kind of looks like a tree with some imagination, with antennas hidden behind them. So that's, that's where that stealth comes from.
And at page 10 of the initial study, isn't it right that its sole statement of aesthetic mitigation is, quote, "The tower will be constructed as a monopine to reduce visual impacts."
Yes.
And there's nothing in there about increasing setbacks or other means of reducing visual or noise impacts?
No, there are not because, and I'll tell you the reason why. First of all, when it comes to specified setback requirements, we really don't have a telecommunications ordinance that, that sets limits. So what we've done in the past is to take a look at the overall site and a look at proximity of structures to certain things. For example, if, on this particular site, if a single-family residential structure could be within 60 feet of another single-family residential structure, that wouldn't be, that would not be beyond, beyond the point of reasoning. In this particular case though, we felt that a combination of some of the locational provisions that the applicant gave us as to they have a dead zone in this particular area. They have looked at alternative sites which they have eliminated. Again, we can only vet that information up to a particular point. So we, we, we took the information that were received. FCC has told us that, you know, if there's a, if there's a dead zone within a particular specified area, a cellular facility can locate in that area. In some of the other approvals, I think there's another, there might be maybe one more that we need to approve in Valley Springs. View impacts and setbacks were really not, were really not the issue. We are looking at this as a facility that provides a service same as a power line or a telephone pole or things of that nature.
So, and in your response to the comments to the initial study, your response says, "The aesthetics of a cell tower are designed to effortlessly blend with the surrounding area."
Try to.
Do you think that accomplishes effortlessly blending?
Well, I mean, with some limitations. Now, what you would find in most areas, and I, and I know you're well aware of this, when you travel around across the state, you see these structures there. It is standard practice that these structures are designed to somehow blend, using that word in quotations. I've seen palm trees with antennae on them. I've seen oak trees with antennae on them. It just depends on how, how intense we want that blend to be. If, if the issue here is there's not enough foliage on this particular structure and we need more, that's one thing. In some other instances that I've seen, applicants have been asked to actually plant live-looking, live trees similar to the, to the structure around the structure so it doesn't look like this structure is just standing there by itself in the sea of nothing. So there's, there are several levels of, of mitigation that we can, that we can look into if that is a concern.
Now, doesn't, don't the field notes for the biological resources impact analysis say that an oak woodland community occurs within the immediate vicinity of the, of the site?
Could you repeat that? I didn't hear.
The biological resources impact analysis, that's a part of the initial statement. It, I'm quoting it as saying, "An oak woodland community occurs within the immediate vicinity of the site."
Right.
And will not be impacted. In your study of the, of the photos of the area around the, around the site, would you say that pines are a predominant species in this vicinity?
Well, when it comes to Valley Springs, I think you have, you have, you have a mix of them.
I'm talking about.
About this particular one, oaks are predominant, but sometimes oaks do not grow as tall as what this particular structure would. I have not seen too many.
With photos from around this area, what would you say the oaks were in relation to 90 feet tall monotone?
I've seen them as high as, you know, 45, maybe 50, 60 feet, if that, if that, if that high.
And those in the photographs around this area?
In the, in the, in the photographs or actually from, just by observation.
Okay, they're not, you're thinking of what you've seen of Valley Springs.
Right.
Could you show us the figure five from the initial study?
Yes, Annette, could you put up figure five, please? Annette?
I'm searching for it. One moment.
There we go. So, um, this is the so-called monopine design proposed for this subject. What species of pine would you say this looks like?
Commissioner Ladish, I'm not a, I'm not an arborist or biologist, but we have to, you know, we have to, we have to use some, some kind of imagination when it comes to these structures. I have not seen one that actually replicates a tree or a pine tree. I have one in my yard at home. It doesn't look like a bottle brush, but I mean, when you put antennae on a structure like this, you, you know, you, you have to, the whole point of this is trying to, trying to disguise the antenna so that you don't really see that metal, those metal parts with something that looks like that. From a distance, this looks like a telecommunications facilities being made to look like a non-telecommunications facility, but I wouldn't look at that and say that's a pine tree.
Would you say that this would effortlessly blend into the surrounding area?
Well, depending on what the surrounding area is, and I did mention earlier that in certain instances, I've actually seen requirements that require other live trees to be, to be planted around it, so it doesn't look like this is just a standalone thing.
This, given, given the pictures that we have of the oak woodland that the biological resource study showed and given the photos that we have of all the area right around of this tree.
Yeah.
Would this effortlessly blend in the surrounding area?
I mean, I, I think the word effortlessly is probably a stretch, but if you take away the, the pine needles from this particular structure, what you would see would be just bare metal.
What you're saying is that that would be less or effort.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, that would be metallic glittering stuff.
So in the initial study, there are simulated photos of what the facility looked like from various parts. Who produced those photos?
Some of those sims were provided by the applicant.
The original applicant.
Yeah.
The simulated photos that simulate the tower.
Yes.
In the.
Right. Yeah, I mean, are you talking about the ones with the red markers on them?
No.
Okay.
I'm talking about the ones that superimposed or photoshopped in a.
Yeah, now we did, we did ask the applicant to provide some simulation of what this would look like in the environment.
But these, I think are the same photos that have been presented by, by the applicant. Okay.
Yeah.
So who paid environmental assessment specialists, the preparer of the biological resources impact?
The applicant did and there is third-party group that we, that we were notified was, were going to do the analysis.
And what, what other parts, if any, of the initial study were provided by the applicant?
We, we prepared the initial study. The information leading to the preparation of the initial study, the information was gathered from several sources, including.
I'm talking about the, the actual attachments, exhibits.
Yeah, at that time, this was just an application that was being submitted for approval. So we hadn't, we didn't get any public input at the point in which that was being done. Now, subsequent to that, when we actually notified people, then we started getting additional information.
Did you have any means to check the accuracy of the elements that were provided by the applicant?
Well, to the extent to which they were not expressly erroneous, you know, we didn't. And also bear in mind that in the back of our, in the back of our minds is, you know, we, we have a telecommunications facility and the biggest objection to it seems to be issues dealing with RF radiation and so on and so forth. We have a purview to, to, to review a project of this nature based on aesthetics and make recommendations, but there's a fine line between talking about aesthetics and, and talking about, you know, how this kind of fits into the environment, health-wise.
On, on another subject, let me call that. Mitigation measure BR1, which is repeated in condition 1-4 of the AUP, dealing with a nesting bird.
Yeah, migrated birds.
It only recommends that construction occur in the non-nesting period between September and January. You think that could have been made a little stronger? You think that could have been made a little stronger, that it could be restricted to those months?
Possibly, yeah, we could probably make that a little bit stronger, yes.
The applicant, that application, and the answer, number eighteen, indicates, yes, that grading will happen, but it does not provide the required estimate of the total yards that will be moved, nor what will be done with the graded material. What's the effect of any of that?
So, at the very least, we're anticipating that the lease area is forty feet by forty feet, so four times four is sixteen, two zeros, about sixteen hundred square feet of lease area. A portion of that would most definitely be excavated for foundation, for, you know, to install the towers, and a portion of that might just require the placement of structures or other equipment that's necessary to run the facility itself.
But the fact that it didn't fill in that blank in the application is something you could take care of later, huh?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I mean, there's still a process where application for permits would be submitted, and then we can actually take a look at, you know, those types of things at that time.
With a generator, there'd be even...
Right, right, right.
Did the applicant provide the planning department with specific data to establish the existence and extent of any service gap in the area?
I think they did, yes. They provided us with a map that shows a circle, and that circle is an area that they identified as a dead zone, and, yeah.
So, did applicant provide specific data concerning what, if any alternative sites were considered, and why they were not chosen?
Yes, they did, and I provided analysis in the updated staff report. Again, when we received that information, I did not call property owners or anything of that nature. I didn't have the reason to at that particular time.
So, basically, if they said the site wasn't adequately...
If they said it was, based on technical, some of them were, they couldn't get a lease to be signed, somebody wouldn't sign a lease with them, et cetera, et cetera. The important thing is that they had to stay within that zone. That was the important thing, because the FCC regulations would allow them to find a viable location within that particular dead zone. Now, I have to point out to you that there have been kind of back-and-forth information as to whether or not there's actually a lack of service in that particular area. Some have claimed that there is no service, and others know that there's a service, a dead spot. When I drive home between here and Valley Springs, there's a dead spot on Highway 12 as I go to Valley Springs, so...
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else that anybody would like to ask, Mr. Elliott?
Yeah.
So, were any rejection letters provided to you by the applicant of the sites that they're saying that landed?
No, they didn't say, they didn't provide us with any letters that said, "We spoke to a person A, B, and C, and they said, 'No, you can't lease our property,' and this is the evidence." And quite frankly, I, and I, I'm not sure if that type of practice does exist, where if they try to lease your property and you say no, and they request, you request a letter from them saying that you rejected their site, I'm not sure if that's, that is not current practice right now in the county. Again, if we do have a telecommunications ordinance, these are some of the things that we can actually stipulate in that ordinance that says, "If you do an alternate site analysis and you get rejected by somebody, please provide us with evidence of that rejection."
I believe that that's definitely necessary.
Absolutely.
Especially in this situation.
Yeah.
Where so many people are affected by it.
Yeah.
And to not, hopefully, they will have that, but for me, that's a big determining factor.
Yeah.
Is, you know, we're taking them at their word.
Right.
They want to do this.
Yeah.
And if they don't have letters of rejection, it seems to me that that's something that is prohibitive.
And what's even more important is, one of the properties listed on there, the property owners actually contacted us by email, which we sent to the planning commission, indicating that they were not approached, or that they were not the owners of the property that they said they owned. So, it's a little convoluted as far as that information is concerned. When I'm looking at an application submitted by a recognized company to provide cellular service in our community, the last thing that crosses my mind is, there would be information that is not, that is not up to snuff. I don't expect that from a nationally recognized organization to provide information that is, you know, below par.
However, once that information was questioned by the public, we could have followed up on it.
No, that information came after the...
I understand. For the purposes of the appeal, we could have had that information available. Commissioner Parker, do you have any other questions?
I think that's it, but that, for me, is the most important thing, because there are alternate sites, and from what I've seen on the social media, they were willing to, in some cases, have the site on an alternate location. And so, I hope that they do have that for us.
Sure, yeah.
Just relative to the noise, the public raised concern over all the documents that we've seen and social media and the like, over the noise that a generator would produce during a power outage, and of course, we have them frequently. However, it does not appear that a generator was ever included in this process. However, as of today, the California Utilities, Public Utilities Commission is requiring a generator. And the decibel level, of course, would be a concern, because it's going to probably come on frequently. But also, the impact it's going to have on the direct neighbor who's approximately sixty feet away is also a concern of mine. So, I'm eager to find out what the impact of that noise level is going to be on the public in general.
As I mentioned earlier, we got that information yesterday, that's why I brought it here today. We haven't really had time to do the analysis on, you know, what, first of all, you know, what type of generator is it, what is the frequency of it's going to run, is it going to be insulated, and so on and so forth, so, yeah.
I understand, there's a lot of, a lot of questions and answers we need to go forward with, but that was my only concern, was the noise level, because I live somewhere that, you know, generators come on during a power outage, and it is just annoying.
So, we'll have an opportunity to look at that. Are you guys ready to begin your presentation?
Good morning, Chair, and members of the Commission. Kevin Sullivan for Vertical Bridge. We also have Bill Lewis, who is the site acquisition and planning consultant for the project. If we could go next slide, please. So, the project is intended to provide new and improved T-Mobile wireless service coverage in this part of Valley Springs, to give, you know, needed wireless coverage and also additional capacity. People are using their cell phones or wireless devices for pretty much everything these days, and that's running a lot of data through these wireless network programs or systems, and we need more facilities to not just provide a signal, but to handle the capacity. The lease area for Vertical Bridge is only about 1% of an over-three-acre property. There's going to be relatively minor grading for an access road, there's already an access road out there, and then there's just going to be some minor foundation work, all of that can be addressed, and grading permits. The facility after construction is going to be unoccupied, which is going to generate virtually no traffic, except for occasional maintenance trips. The leased area is going to have an eight-foot-high fence with privacy slats, and all of the equipment is going to be about six feet or below. As noted, there is going to be a generator here, I'll address that at the end, and we can also answer any additional questions about that. Six other possible locations in the general area were looked at to potentially locate this facility, but were rejected because they were either outside the search ring for T-Mobile's area network, property owners weren't interested in the lease, there were environmental impacts, or there were other technical and, technical issues with respect to bringing in utilities. Project, I'm sorry, project operations must comply with the FCC RF health safety standards, and the county director of planning has determined that this disguised facility and the project complies with all county land use and design regulations. Next, please. Next slide, please. Oh, there we go. There was a detailed mitigated negative declaration that was prepared that determined that with just a few standard mitigation measures, this project would not result in any significant impacts. Also, this project is not going to have any microplastic impacts, we addressed that in my March 6 letter, including Exhibit E to that letter. The property is not in or near any designated scenic roadways or corridors, and the lease area is over a thousand feet away from Baldwin Street, which is the nearest public road. The nearest home is, the edge of the nearest home is about 116 feet away from the center of the pole, and about 105 feet away from the edge of the branching. We provided some information on that, and you'll see that letter, or see that later. The disguised facility will be designed to meet all structural requirements of the California Building Code, and also to have a 30-foot fall zone area in the event of an unlikely catastrophic circumstance. The facility will also comply with all county codes, including for noise, water quality, and fire protection. And with respect to kind of the visual landscape in the area, you know, the nearby segments of Baldwin Street and Clement's Place have many tall trees and other vegetation along the road, and there's also a lot of tall utility poles that we'll see, we're not quite there yet, with crossarms and transformers and high utility lines. So, here's one of the sims that we provided, this is on Clement's Place, north of the site, looking slightly to the southeast, and you can see there is a lot of trees in the area. Next slide, please. This is also on Clement's Place, north of the site, looking slightly southwest, and you can see trees from the road. Next slide, please. This is on Baldwin Street, looking to the east, and you can see the real tall utility poles and lines, crossarms, some of these have transformers. Those utility poles, we estimate being about, you know, 40 to 45 feet high. Next slide, please. This is at the corner of Baldwin Street and Crossel Court, looking to the northeast. Again, tall utility lines and poles and transformers and crossarms are part of the visual landscape out there. Next slide, please. This is on Kane Lane, east of Hart-Vixen Lane, looking to the south. Then you can see that, you know, the facility will be below the ridge line in that area. Next, please. This is on Crossel Court, east of Baldwin Street, looking to the north. Next slide, please. This is on Usher Drive, west of Schmidt Place, looking to the north, and there's a lot of trees and foliage in the area. Next slide, please. This is at the intersection of Hart-Vixen Lane and Brooks Road, north of the project, looking south, and you can just see some of the visual landscape there. Next slide, please. Here's a plan sheet that shows the distance of the facility from the nearest off-site residence, and you can see that the center of the pole is about 116 feet away from the nearest corner of the home, and it's about 105 feet away from the edge of the branching. Next slide, please. Again, this facility is needed to provide new and enhanced, improved wireless service, which is reliable in-building and in-vehicle coverage in this part of Valley Springs. That improved and enhanced coverage and new coverage will help communications for everyday life, for business, for telehealth, and for the critical use of residents and first responders during emergency situations. The facility footprint is going to cover hundreds of unserved or underserved homes with new and improved, reliable in-building and in-vehicle coverage, and as noted in my March 6 letter, the, you know, under federal law, the Federal Telecommunications Act and guiding Ninth Circuit court decisions, the issue here isn't whether there's AT&amp;T coverage in the area. Every single provider has an opportunity to provide coverage in the area. So, what we look at is, is there a coverage gap for this particular provider, in this case, T-Mobile, and the answer is yes. The facility will provide new reliable in-building and enhanced wireless coverage for over 1,100 residents within the coverage footprint. The, in the coverage maps that we're going to see from T-Mobile, they are able to overlay in the coverage footprint area data that they get from the United States Census Bureau that gives population counts in certain areas, and so that's where they came up with that information. The facility will provide the same new reliable coverage for nearby segments of Baldwin Street, the surrounding street network, and even part of South Highway 26 to the north, I think that's the northwest. Next slide, please. So, here is a coverage map, this is using T-Mobile's new coverage map program, their software program. With the application, there were some coverage maps that were provided in different colors, but this is the new software that they use. And you can see over on the left-hand side of the slide, we show the location, the proposed location for the facility, and you see a lot of yellow out there, which indicates that there's just marginal coverage outdoor, when the coverage objective is strong, reliable, continuous coverage indoors and in-vehicle. Over on the right-hand side of the slide, you can see that with this facility, we've got a pretty significant coverage footprint here that picks up these hundreds of homes with approximately 1,100 residents, and also the street network in the area and part of Highway 26 up to the northwest. Next slide, please. Here are some other slides that T-Mobile uses to identify whether there's a gap in coverage in their area wireless network. On the left side of the slide, what you have is, the red and orange dots indicate that the wireless power signal to T-Mobile customers trying to log on to the network is really low. Again, if you see the red and orange, that means it's a very, very weak signal strength. Over on the right-hand side of the slide, this is some data analytics from T-Mobile that show that T-Mobile customers are trying to connect to the network, but they can't maintain a strong signal. Anything that's in the, kind of the gray or the blue is showing that information. Next, please. Here is an aerial indicating the alternative site analysis that we did for this project. You can see down, kind of in the center, below, you know, toward the bottom, we've got the project location, we've got the blue pin, and then we've got six other yellow pins. Bill Lewis can provide specific information with respect to all of these, but we did look at these and determine that for a number of reasons, it just wasn't feasible to locate. On the Lieberman site, we did get an email, surprising email, from Ms. Lieberman, indicating that she was never contacted, Bill can address that. I have seen that a mailing went out to her address in Southern California. Regardless of whether she received that or not, she stated in the email that she just sent in the last few days that she doesn't want the, you know, facility on her site. So, she has indicated, she has confirmed, that she's not interested in leasing to T-Mobile for this site. Some of the, well, Bill Lewis can get into detail about why each of these sites were rejected, but there are a number of factors in that, and they were explained, they were provided as an attachment of my March 6 letter. Next, please. Here's another aerial that just shows some elevations in the area. The red circle is the approximate search ring that we're looking... The red circle is the approximate search ring that we're looking at. This is where T-Mobile would like the facility to be located, because that's where it's going to, you know, serve the most people with the coverage footprint, and then also integrate into its wireless area network. About right in the middle, you can see there's an elevation of seven forty-two, so we've got a ridge that's pretty high there, which makes it difficult for the couple of locations up to the north, um, to propagate a signal past that terrain, the Ford Construction elevation there. This is all taken off of Google Maps. You know, we had, no one sent a surveyor out there, we're not saying that, but it, standard practice is that you use, you know, Google Maps or other, uh, resources available online to get elevations, and it's showing that Ford, uh, Construction is about a hundred feet below that ridge in the middle, and then the Calaveras Water Tank is about two hundred and ten feet, uh, below that ridge at seven forty-two. So that's some of the reason why those locations to the north were, were rejected. Next slide, please. Actually, if you could go to slide number nineteen and then twenty, and then we'll come back to, um, eighteen. So, we had also provided this as part of my March 6th letter. This is a broadleaf, an example of a broadleaf design. Um, we're told that the manufacturers don't have specifically an oak tree design, but they do have a broadleaf design that, you know, looks similar to an oak. Next slide, please. And here's, you know, just more of a close-up as to what that design looks like. Vertical Bridge would be willing to change the design, you know, from a pine tree to an oak tree if that's what this commission wanted. If we could go back to slide eighteen, please. So Vertical Bridge asks, uh, that this commission deny the appeal and uphold the county planning director's detailed decisions to certify the MND for the project and also approve the project's administrative use permit. With respect to the generator, here's an option for the commission to consider. You can certainly impose a condition of approval on this project that Vertical Bridge has to go out and, uh, obtain and comply with all county fire district and air quality management district permits and standards with respect to operation of that generator. You can also require, um, Vertical Bridge to submit a supplemental noise study that will analyze the generator and the noise that it produces to ensure that that generator either complies outright with the county's daytime and nighttime noise standards, or provide some mitigation, uh, some kind of sound attenuation, some baffling, a, a block wall or something like that, to make sure that operations of that generator, um, will comply with the county noise standard, and if we can't show that, then we don't have a project. Um, so again, we're here to answer any questions that you have.
I do have a question. Do you know if the other carriers have better coverage in that area? And, and I understand that you're entitled to, to get coverage also.
Sure.
I'm just asking the question.
I don't know. I, I, we don't have that information.
I have a question. So, I noticed on social media, people were saying that sometimes they'll put multiple companies on one site.
Yeah.
Is there any reason why we can't do that?
Well, that was my question.
Oh, that's okay.
He does, he can't answer, because he doesn't even know if they have coverage.
Well, so, um, so what you're talking about is co-location. So, I, I understand your question now. We are not aware, and Bill can back this up, that in the search ring that we had, that there were any other existing carriers, um, that had facilities there that could accommodate a co-location. That's one of the first things that we look at. That's, that's low fruit for, for us. We love co-location. It actually is a much easier process for us, um, and is almost, most times is almost ministerial in nature. We wouldn't even have to come to you. So if we had that option in this area, we would have taken it. I'm not aware that there is that option.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
So, with regards to the Ford location.
Mm-hmm.
You've said that they would, it wasn't a viable spot because of costs? Is that?
Yeah.
It's not necessarily elevation, because I see it still on there as a viable spot.
It was, the, the pins that you saw on that aerial were projects that were looked at at for potential. All of those were rejected because they were infeasible. Bill can provide some additional information, but on the Ford Construction site, we had multiple issues. One, we had the elevation issue, uh, because it's a hundred feet lower than the seven forty-two ridge, kind of in the center of the, uh, the search ring. Um, we also had active quarry operations, so we had to be outside of their, you know, their area. We also had to bring power, uh, almost three thousand feet from a location on the nearby road, so there was a cost issue there as well. Uh, so there were a number of factors, and I may even be missing some, as to why the Ford Construction site was rejected as infeasible.
Do you think it was primarily the cost associated with it? Because I see the stick pin still in there as a viable spot.
No, again, the, it's not a viable spot. It was a spot that was looked at in the alternative site analysis to, to see whether it had potential to serve this site. It was also on-
You're talking about in the range. It was in the range of viability. If you look at the circle, it's within-
It was, it was within your, the ring.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. So, the, Bill can explain this a little more, maybe I'll just have him come up.
Yeah, come on up.
Hi, I'm Bill Lewis with, uh, Assurance Development, representing the applicant. Actually, um, we had, uh, the radio frequency engineer prepare some, um, additional propagation maps, um, one for the Ford, for the location at the Ford Construction, as well as Calaveras, um, County Water Facility, just to the north of that. Like to pass that out, if, if that's okay. And then I have a, three extras for the, the public. So on the first page, it, it really addresses the coverage objective. Uh, Vertical Bridge is proposing to build a new structure, uh, for the future co-location of multiple carriers. Um, the intent is to, uh, build a facility that multiple carriers can locate on. Um, Vertical Bridge's, uh, uh, business practice, they, they build infrastructure so that multiple carriers can, can locate on it. So that is the, the intent that other carriers in the future would, would locate on this tower. Um, T-Mobile is proposing to co-locate on its equipment at an eighty-one-foot elevation on the structure, and so all the propagation maps, um, that you'll see, uh, show an eighty-one foot antenna centerline in comparison to the other locations. Um, and the objective is to provide in-building and in-vehicle wireless coverage within the rural areas of Valley Spring, um, that, uh, T-Mobile currently has inadequate, uh, coverage to. So on the first, uh, coverage map, it shows, um, what, uh, my colleague had already presented. On the left-hand side, it shows the current coverage. Uh, the right-hand side, it shows proposed coverage. Um, on the, the second page, this is a one for the Ford Construction. Um, you can see, um, that even with the constraints in terms of power, um, uh, location, um, everything that we ruled out from a coverage perspective, it does not adequately cover the, the objective, uh, search area and, and need, um, in that area. Um, and if you compare it to the left, the photo on the left-hand side, it's a comparison to our project location. The next page is a Calaveras Water, um, District property just to the north of the Ford Construction, which, um, because of the topography, i- it's very, um, uh, minimal in terms of what type of coverage it's going to provide. And a, and a comparison to the project location, uh, you can see that there's a, the project location has a significantly better coverage footprint.
Did you evaluate a taller tower?
In, uh, which location?
Yeah, uh, either the Water District or Ford Construction.
So, um, the, in order, so the, the elevation, um, and one of the reasons, if you, if you look at the Ford Construction, you can kind of see, it gets blocked halfway through the circle. Um, that elevation, um, and I believe it was on one of the presentation slides.
Seven forty-two.
It's about a hundred feet more. So in order to, uh, actually cover that, it would have to be higher than seven hu- hundred and forty-two in terms of elevation, which would be an additional hundred feet, and that would just get you to the same elevation. Because of where it's at, you're going to have to be even higher to shoot down. So you'd be looking, I, I'm not an RF engineer, but it would, it would be taller than two hundred feet. Uh, I don't know what the exact height would be.
Well, there's a hundred-foot difference, and the tower you're proposing is ninety feet, so there's-
Yeah.
-a portion of it, and of course, all your equipment's not at the very top. I understand that necessarily.
And we would have to, and we would have to clear, yeah, we would also have to clear, you know, the hill.
You know, there are towers that are a hundred and thirty feet. There, there are taller towers available, so I just wonder why you didn't look at a taller tower, and, and I know it probably wouldn't necessarily get you the same coverage, because the coverage will be centered in a different location anyway.
I, I, I would, I would say that at that location, you would need a, over a two-hundred-foot tower just to clear the ridge that's in the center. And because of how far away it is, it, it would increase, uh, in terms of the geograph, the geometry of it, right angle, A plus, A squared plus B squared equals C squared, I don't remember it exactly, but you would have to have a much taller structure because of the distance away from the ridge that it's trying to, to shoot over. So, we could run propagation maps to see what height of a tower. I could comfortably say it would be in excess of two hundred feet, if not closer to three hundred feet.
So, with regards to site number two, do you have a letter?
Uh, we, site-
Something rejected, there's-
Which, which, uh-
Site two. Because site two seems to be right there in the middle. Do you have a letter from them?
Yeah, of course, of course, yeah.
Also, that some of the, the options were not contacted. They, they said they weren't, and then some of them said that they might be willing to do it, I saw.
Um, we don't have a rejection letter from, uh, from candidate two, alternative two. I can say that a letter was sent out, uh, on August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, to the address that's listed, um, as a mailing address on the county, um, property records, uh, uh, information. So a, a letter of interest was sent out, and no response was received.
So they didn't reject it, they just didn't respond?
They did not, they did not respond, correct.
Interesting, because I know if I see stuff sometimes, I'd, so- I know sometimes when I get letters that look suspicious, they go to the circular file, and I wonder if that might be what happened in this instance, and it seems like it would be reasonable to maybe make, try and make further contact with them if it's a more suitable spot, because clearly the, our residents here don't think this is. You know what I'm saying? I mean, it's, we're getting blasted online.
And perhaps a more accurate analysis would have said there was no response from those potential site owners, rather than that they rejected it. I mean, that, you have to see that it's harming your credibility when the obvious facts can be disputed. I'm sorry, it's just really, really frustrating.
I don't think there are very many people sitting in this room that don't agree that we need better coverage. I think everybody would agree to that. But is this the best spot for this tower? That's what we're questioning. And I look at the pictures, and I just see in here that there's vast swaths of land, and there's no possibility in those vast swaths of land?
Um, so, to answer your question on, on alternative two, um, we did not get a, a response. Um, at, even to this point, it sounds like that person, from what you're telling me, is interested. They have still not responded or contacted our office. Um, so if they had, um, even, they have notice now, and they still have not contacted us, which-
Well, they've been noticed now, except by if they read it on social media.
We, we did send a letter of interest to the, to the address.
I understand, and you got no response to it, and you didn't follow up or attempt another contact. That, that's what we're saying, but instead what you reported to us is that they were not interested.
We, we inferred from the lack of responding to, to our inquiries as they were, weren't interested.
But when you were here last time, you saw the interest in this, and it seems that it would have been prudent for you when you saw this opposition, that you might have reached out a little further, because we even said that we were going to be questioning this. I know I did. And you still didn't reach out, and I'm questioning why that is, because you had ample opportunity. We postponed this for weeks.
Mm-hmm.
And, we allowed you to defer your presentation to today, which was to allow you the best opportunity to respond to what you heard were the concerns from the community.
Mm-hmm. And, and I do recall, um, the, the, the concerns from, from the last meeting. Um, there's only so much that can be done in terms of getting, so, people don't respond, people hang up. It, it's difficult to get a documented no, um, but we did make an attempt, um, to get interest and look at alternative locations for this area.
It seems to me, just from my observation, that it seems like you went with the easiest one. They responded, and, and that's the one you went with. But for something this important, it seems like you would have reached out. Better effort to those other options.
I would say likely the, the alternative three would have been the easiest, knowing the, that it's further away from residential. Um, we do look at, um, the area, the other uses and the surrounding areas. We understand that, um, putting it near residential could upset residences. Um, we understood and were, uh, in communication with, with, uh, Mr. Elliott in terms of potential appeals, um, going into this, and, and so we, we did not go necessarily with the easiest option. Um, I would say the easiest option would be a quarry, because we're not going to get opposition, or as much opposition.
More, more costly there, though, for sure.
Um, it, it is going to be costly, but this location that we're actually at as well is going to be also costly in terms of, there, there's, there's required fire code for trucks to go up that hill. It's going to require grading. It's, uh, there's a lot of granite there, which is, if you're digging a foundation, it's going to be extremely expensive. Um, from a cost perspective, I don't, I would not say this is the cheapest out of all the options that we, we looked at.
Just real, real quick, um, what's, generally speaking, the cost of the entire project?
I, I don't know the, the specifics, but, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll give you a range. Um, uh, I don't know the specific cost of this one. Um, a, a raw land, non-stealth facility can be, you know, two hundred thousand dollars. Um, I've seen some that go up to, close to a million dollars because of the grading and the, the access roads and utilities. Um, so it, it's a wide range. I would say this project is not on the cheaper side. It's, it's going to be, uh, more expensive than the average site that, that is deployed.
Ballpark, again, what would be the cost of sending four or eight different prospective property owners a certified letter, so they would, so you would know and be assured they received the letter that they signed for? What would that cost me? Ballpark?
Uh, not, not nearly as much. I would say probably about five to six dollars per letter. Um, I, what I do want to say, though, is, alternative one, which they had said that they weren't, sent, uh, a notice, indicated that they weren't interested, um, in, in their response. Um, the other, I guess, the, the other, uh, private individual-
She has since responded that she's not interested.
Yeah.
She didn't respond initially, so that would not have been in your analysis.
I, I understand, okay.
It would have been more properly, uh, no response.
It could have been, uh, stated that no response-
Yes.
...was given. Um, alternative two, um, it's, it, I need to look at the elevation. I, I believe it's going to be lower, uh, than what the tower is, but I would have to look at that. But we're also near, near other residences as well. Um, so it's not necessarily, you know, I, I can understand, um, the concerns of the neighbors that are immediately within our vicinity, uh, and that they don't want it, and they'd prefer to have it in alternative two. But I don't know if those, the neighbors that are near-
Somewhere else.
But, but it's just- But but it's just, you know, kicking the can down for somebody else to to have an issue with because who's to say that if we were here today discussing a location at alternative two, that the neighbors near there would say, why aren't you going to the one, uh, down the street, which is where we're at today? So i- it's difficult to say, um, what would happen in that scenario if if we would still have objections.
I I think we would still have objections.
I I I would suspect that as well.
That that another location in the center of a residential area is going to be necessarily much better than this one. I think the the search should really be for a location that can provide you eighty percent of what this can in a less objectionable location because I don't think anybody is saying they don't wanna sell tower, that we don't want expanded coverage. That's why I was curious about the potential for co-location on someone else's. If if they're able to get seventy-five or eighty percent of the coverage and you could do it for much less money and much less community consternation, you know, wouldn't that be worthwhile? I, and I also understand the desire to get coverage that other people don't have because that that's actually providing a benefit to the community as well.
Mm-hmm. Um, the the other one, uh, other point in terms of the Ford construction location, which my colleague, um, did not indicate. Uh, in order to bring power to that site, we would also be crossing a, uh, federally recognized wetlands, which is shown on the the updated ASA. So that provides additional environmental concerns, um, which was also considered when when evaluating that location.
It it would have behooved you to have provided this level of detail in your alternative site list so that we could, uh, what, because when we read this, it's like, oh, a sentence or two about why you didn't use it. So it's hard for us to evaluate whether you made a real effort to evaluate those alternative sites or not.
I I understand and appreciate that that comment. Um, I do wanna say that I did have one, if not two, um, virtual meetings with, uh, with Mr. Elliott, the planning director, regarding alternative, uh, uh, locations. Um, we discussed it in detail. Um, he, we, we added additional information on the ASA, on the alternative site analysis, based off of those conversations. Um, but, uh, I I understand and I appreciate, uh, your comments.
Given, given the controversy of cell towers in residential areas, you can expect that not just the commissioners or the planning director, but the public will be interested in that analysis.
So just briefly.
And I'm sure this isn't the first time that you've brought across this, and this is the thing that's perplexing to me. How can this possibly be the first time that you've had opposition like this? It couldn't possibly be unless you just got started in this business. To not be thorough is just perplexing. I just don't get it. How how can you guys have not been thorough? I just don't.
I.
Just briefly. Just briefly, uh, supplemental noise study along with mitigation measures. That probably should have been included. But of course, I'm gonna be looking forward to that because I I could just imagine what impact that would have. I mean, even if you suggested, and and everyone seems to be okay with it, which I don't see how, but the noise part of it, i- it's just a constant reminder. Whether you're laying in bed or watching television and you hear a diesel engine rev up and annoy your outdoor barbecue or whatever the case might be. So that's gonna have to be, I mean, I'm not sure why it wasn't done just in case previously. But anyway, that's, I'm looking forward to seeing that.
Uh, definitely, and we we will comply with, uh, the noise requirements that the county has. There there are set guidelines in terms of of noise. Um, I can say that these generators are are used in the time of an emergency. They are tested for a few minutes, um, periodically, you know, over a few times a year. Um, but in the event that there's actually significant, and and the testing would be done during days, not not evenings. But in the event of a, of an emergency is when, when these are gonna be, um, deployed. And really because of the need and and the requirements because of, uh, CPUC high fire zone. So the need for, um, reliable, you know, s- coverage for emergency services to for evacuations um, i- is why they're requiring, uh, the use of an emergency generator. So I understand the concerns in terms of the noise, but if they are being deployed, there's, there's a a reason why, um, they are needed.
And I think an in-depth assessment of how frequently, over the course of, you know, three months, six months, or over the year, or over the last couple of years, there are power outages that would require the deployment of the generators.
Yeah, uh, these sites do also have battery backup, um, anywhere between four and eight hours of battery backup. Um, so they're not gonna be, if there's a minor, short-term, couple-hour, um, uh, power outage, they're not gonna kick on. It's gonna be in more extended periods of time.
I would point out that the the PUC order, uh, contemplates that, that with what PG&E is doing to us these days with, uh, uh, having power safety outages also, even when there isn't an emergency, they're checking things out or something. And that don't go on for a day or so. Uh, and, uh, usually daylight hours. But that these, the generator would kick in at those times also after your battery. I have, I have a, a, a bunch of questions, but I think I should start with Mr. Sullivan.
Sounds good.
I'm sure I'll be.
I'll be sitting right there for you.
Sure, I'll be seeing you. First, I'm, good morning.
Good morning.
I I really appreciate the fact that you've come in with a broadleaf alternative. Um, and I'll be interested in hearing from the, uh, other people in the room, the citizens, what they think of that, but I do have a couple of questions on that. Will, if you had the broadleaf version, would it meet, uh, what you've presented as an exhibit C, the thirty-foot fall standard that that do not, it wouldn't fall at its length, it would be. If it completely fell, would all the parts be within thirty feet of the center?
Yes, it would be designed in the same manner as the proposed pine tree facility. It would be designed with that thirty-foot fall zone, yes.
And what about the, uh?
I'd just like to understand the fall design, so it's designed, the tower is designed to collapse internally, basically? Not tip over, right?
So, based on the information in the structural engineer's letter, they identify that the maximum stresses, uh, in a catastrophic event would be felt at the top thirty feet of the the pole and that, that. So that if there was a catastrophic event, it would be the top thirty feet that were affected. That's, that's what I understand.
Catastrophic event, the rest of it might fall.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't know.
And it didn't look like it was an oak tree to me. It looked like a different version of a pine.
Yeah, that's.
Right, so, but you're calling it a, I understand. It's an oak tree and it's leaves.
Yeah, it's a broadleaf.
I'm just making sure that you know that.
Yeah.
It was not a oak tree.
It's not an oak tree, it's a broadleaf.
We do have.
You were quite open about that. What, with the broadleaf version?
Okay, same broadleaf.
Would the broadleaf version have the same characteristics concerning the microplastics?
Correct, it it's designed by the same manufacturer and the same microplastics issues would would apply. In other words, it does, that type of design would not shed microplastics, same as the monopine.
And and that's even after parts have fallen off for age and they're decaying on the ground, there just aren't microplastics to be concerned about.
Based on the information from the manufacturer, um, the answer is yes. Also, um, I included an article in my March sixth letter with respect to the South Lake Tahoe Planning Commission and an expert in microplastics that they had investigate these issues and determined that this type of design from this same manufacturer here, as in South Lake Tahoe, did not have a microplastics concern. There also, to address, you know, if things fall, you know, there are typical requirements, conditions of approval and any permits that you have to maintain the facility consistent with the representations that you've made, the photo sims and things like that. That you've got to keep the site clean, so I think that would address some of your concerns.
Okay, could you call up the, uh, the slide that showed your, uh, the dimensions between the next door neighbor and the project? I wasn't keeping track of the numbers.
There it is.
There we go.
Do you have a paper?
Yeah, we have it.
It's in your.
Yeah, that's.
That's, I couldn't, I just can't see the distances.
Okay, now, what I, what I read is the distance, is the distance from the house to the branches of the, the fake tree is a hundred and five feet, one inch, I believe.
Correct.
Okay, um. But using the same scale, if you just take the nearest distance from the property line of that household to the branches, uh, appears to really be slightly over fifty feet.
Yes, they, the center of the pole is sixty feet away from that north property line.
Okay, and the the branches spread out a total of twenty, so, okay, and.
Where are they measuring from? They measuring from the front?
Are you measuring?
The measurement is the shortest distance between, they have multiple measurements there. From the corner of the house to the corner of the enclosure is the shortest distance that they've measured.
Right, it's, the, the architect, and it was Bill's office that did that. Um, the architect said, do measurements from the nearest edge of the house to these, to the center of the pole, to the edge of the branching.
And I appreciate that you show the edge of the branching because it's really what is seen as the
Right.
the closeness of the tree.
And and by the way, I mean, to the extent someone is saying the other corner to the, you know, to the southwest, um, is closer. I just did a ballpark measurement and it seems like it's the exact same distance as the corner that's measured, so.
Um, and then, so of course, the, the measurement from the property line of that neighbor to the cyclone fence itself, your, your eight-foot fence is ten feet. Less than that, about?
So I'm sorry, what's the question?
From the property line to the site, cyclone, I mean, half competition, with the cyclone fence, uh, surrounding your site.
Yeah, I think it would be somewhere in the range of forty, forty-ish feet.
Okay, um. It's just, uh, it's just something to to consider. Standing at that property line fifty feet away, looking up at a ninety-foot plastic tree is, to me, intimidating. Now, in your first letter, uh, you had an exhibit B that showed the, uh, the range of the, uh, power of of the transmission. In other words, you're, you have your, your most recent map coverage. You had an earlier map coverage, and did that show exactly the same result?
Yes.
That was one in red.
So, right. So I'm not the RF engineer that prepared either maps and I'm understanding that different software programs were used for the different maps. I I would say that they tell substantially the same story, which is, you know, the size of the coverage footprint for the new facility and where the gap in coverage exists in T-Mobile's area network.
And so looking at at what was just presented to us, I noticed that the scale between your project location coverage and the, say, alternative three Ford construction coverage is quite different. I mean, if, if you drew the circle in the proposed location coverage, your circle, well, you can see in in the Ford construction version of of the map, you can see where your project location is way up on the page here. It, it seems to me that that those should have been in the same scale so we get an idea of the Ford, uh, Ford construction, uh, the coverage would be with the Ford construction map. But we'll, we'll get, we'll get back to the Ford construction in a, in a bit. So this map is a graphic illustration. Uh, can we tell from it the, the actual size of the, of the service gap, the number of users affected, the variation in the, in, uh, who, how many more would be connected than others? I mean, you're showing areas, but you're not showing population.
Yeah, on slide, if we could go to slide fourteen, please. So you can see at the bottom there that, and and this information is also contained in my March sixth letter. T-Mobile, using US Census Bureau data, has determined that this green new coverage footprint from the proposed facility would serve a little over one thousand one hundred new potential customers.
And you have the same, uh, sorts of figures for the Ford construction site?
I, no, we, we don't have those. In addition, the Ford construction site, its coverage footprint doesn't serve this coverage objective. What we're trying to do is cover as much of the, you know, population area of Valley Springs as possible. And the Ford construction site is far to the north and then has terrain blocking, uh, about in the middle.
So how did you settle on which alternative sites to consider? You, you, you walk into the area, maybe this is more of a question for.
I think, I think it's a question for Bill.
Why don't you both stand?
Um, yeah, so we, we look at the search ring that's provided to us in terms of the coverage need. Um, we then look at.
And who, well, who established the ring?
The RF engineer, so the the network engineer will determine we need coverage in this area.
Can, can I just jump in and explain a little bit more on that? He did the alternative site. But the, so in designing an area network, it's kind of like, uh, it, it's, it's like putting together a puzzle. And it's also explained as, when we used to have lawns, you know, you would have a sprinkler system that would just overlap, would just kind of kiss each other right in the middle. And so you didn't want oversaturation and you didn't want big gaps. And so T-Mobile in this area has some existing sites and some, uh, funded, planned, and, you know, either in processing for permits or soon to be processed for permits. And so they've identified that this is a coverage objective with a lot of population that also fits in with other existing or immediately planned facilities that will create kind of an integrated area network.
I see. Um, okay, so now back to the, you've, you've established an area where you believe there's a service gap.
Correct, and to, to, to further my colleague's point. Um, so we will look at a, a, a certain area. We look at the applicable land use. We, we look at, um, what is actually feasible in terms of what we need. Is there even space on, on, on the specific property? Um, we do, uh, based off of that information, we also work with the network engineer to make sure it's not too close to another site. You know, they give us a general area, but if we're right at the edge, it might be too close to another location. So there are situations where we might have a candidate and it, and it doesn't work in in that case.
How are you, how are you actually surveying the area? I mean, like in, in the Anacortes case in the, in the Ninth Circuit where they had eighteen alternative sites.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We are, we're up to six now.
So we will look at Google Earth and and do what's called a desktop recon and get a general sense of what does the area look like.
This area might be good, this area.
Yeah, and then we, we drive the area and and look at, you know, because there's certain things that you can't really. certain things that you can't really, until you get boots on the ground, you can't really get a full picture. We'll survey the area and identify locations, and based off of, you know, objectives from the RF engineer, applicable land use, and, and potential access, can we even get power to this location, can we actually access it, you know, are there environmental concerns? Those all kind of go into what we, we look at. In terms of our analysis.
Identity of the residences and.
All of those things, yes, and if you look at the area that we looked at, it, we basically hugged the edge of, of the, the dense populations. We, we were trying to be on the edges of the population as possible, and not necessarily stick it smack dab in the middle of, of, of residences, so we were.
You don't have a, a set list of criteria, you, you, you're, you're, you're looking at what the facts are on the ground, and coming up with some reasonable alternatives, and you didn't find any more alternatives than what you presented us?
Those, those were the alternatives that we felt could potentially work.
So. Turning to the, the biological resources impact analysis, that's attached to the initial statement. Why was it entitled Brooks Road?
The, the, the project?
Biological resources impact analysis and other documents we've received from you refer to this as Brooks Road, and I'm, I'm well aware that Brooks Road is a, is a street several blocks away, but it's not in any of the alternative.
Yeah, so that, that was an internal project name, so the different, the carrier, the vertical bridge, they have different names for the different projects as an identifier.
Why was this one named Brooks Road?
I, I don't, I wasn't the one that, that named the project.
It was central, and that's where they anticipated they might end up.
And you didn't.
Right.
There wasn't an analysis prepared, though, for a Brooks Road site, or even a, anything sent out to anybody on Brooks Road?
Yeah, oftentimes they use characteristics that are major identifiers for the area, so you, you know, when you're going through the different projects, it triggers, oh, I know exactly which location or what area that, that's referring. That name was chosen before we had candidates, so at that point, it's, doesn't make sense to change the name, and it, it becomes confusing.
Okay, well, let's, let's go to consideration of the Ford Construction site. Who was the Ford Construction representative that was consulted on this?
I don't have that information on hand, but I can gather it and, and send it to.
We have, evidence has been submitted that the, the responsible person on site is named Jerry Middleton, Middleton, and that he was contacted by a member of the public, and that he had not had any indication of interest from you. He did, good news for everybody here, indicate that he was interested, that the Ford Construction would be interested, but apparently there was no, no contact, no, as far as, unless you can tell me different, actual survey of.
I, I can get the information of who we spoke to, but our indication was that there was interest, we, we didn't state that there was no interest, our, our evaluation was that there was interest, and we looked at it, and based off of the area that, that we could go is what we analyzed, and there were factors that prohibited us from, from locating there, one of which would be the, the, the coverage, not achieving the coverage within the residential area to the south.
Let's agree with that. You show, let's, and maybe you can get this slide back up on your map, the, the, the elevations, the, the slide that shows the elevation.
Six forty-two and seven forty-three.
I think it's slide seventeen?
Okay, well, so, as I understand from what was stated before, the red dots aren't alternative sites, these are high points.
On that slide, yes, those are just general, from Google Earth, you know, estimates in terms of the elevation, so that you can get a, a representation of the topography. This was prepared before we were able to get the propagation map specific for, for Construction, we weren't sure if we were going to have it in time to, to submit, we were able to get those before the meeting, which is what I handed out.
You show elevation of six hundred and forty-two feet for Ford. If you take the topo map that's available online for the Hogan Dam area, why it shows that the Ford Construction site goes up to, well, over eight hundred feet?
Correct, if you start going south on the property, it does go up, but that's an active quarry operations, it's not a location that, that we can locate on.
We don't have that information other, other than what you just said.
What's that?
We don't have that information other than what you just said, all we had was six hundred and forty-two feet. If, if you could put a tower, another ninety-foot tower, at eight hundred feet, which is past the active quarry area, as far as I can tell from Google Earth, if you could put, say, a ninety-foot tower on a base that's eight hundred and ten, twenty feet, from what you said earlier, that would make a difference.
In terms of elevation, correct, however, based off of, you know, if you look at Google Maps and you look at the active roadways that, that area is being used, there are heavy trucks that are going through there, which cause vibration, and if there's significant vibration near the equipment, it could affect the actual ground cabinets, so that is, that would be a concern, especially with the type of trucks that they use there.
How near?
So, some, I don't know the specifics, but I will say that those situations where we locate near railroad stations, or railroad lines, and we can't, there's a distance where the vibrations just from the passing trains will, will affect the equipment, but I, I don't, I don't know the specifics based off of the type of equipment, there's a lot of variables there. In addition, there's concerns with the power, and concerns with environmental impacts, crossing an active wetlands area.
But that would be to wherever your six hundred and forty-two foot tower would be, right?
Oh, and we would have to cross that to access the property, to bring.
It comes from a road, I mean, there's a road, the driveway comes in from Hogan Dam Road. There's no wetlands along that driveway for that.
I believe there is a, a wetlands, it was on the attached ASA, Alternative Site Analysis, the updated one, but it does show on that.
It's mentioned, and, and there's a picture below the discussion of the wetlands that shows a black line that would be going up.
So, I don't know if you can see this, the.
I think I'm looking at the same thing.
The PSSC is the indication of wetlands.
Yes.
And there's a, a yellow line, which is the, the proposed route, and we would have to be crossing over that to, to get to the nearest.
And that's to get to the six hundred and forty-two elevation.
That would have to be crossed regardless, whether it's at the eight hundred or.
I don't see, okay, so from the, the lowest PSSC on that picture, whatever PSSC is, there's a black line that goes to the bottom of that picture.
That, that is a, yeah, that, that is another, that's referenced as R5UBI, as a, as another indicator on the, on the national wetlands, so there, there's multiple types
Black line is a, is a wetland?
It is some sort of indicator that's taken on, because you can see, you can see the line continue.
So. In your, in your February second letter brief, at, at page two, one reason given for the rejection, or at least one at that point, unnamed alternative site, was infeasible to provide necessary electrical power to a possible site, was that a reference to Ford Construction?
So there, I don't, I don't have that, that ASA with me, there were two areas that had, two alternatives that had issues with power, one of which was Ford, the other one was the open space to the east on the map, so both of those areas.
I understand that that is.
Yeah.
Really asking a lot, but does infeasible in this context mean more costly?
Infeasible, not necessarily more costly, but also issues in terms of, of designing it and working with, with, with PG&E.
But aren't you referring to costs elsewhere?
He's talking about crossing the wetlands.
As well as, as well as crossing the wetlands, correct.
So, you only considered one site on the area of the property that's owned by Ford Construction, right?
We, we looked at the entire property, that location was identified when we were discussing with them as a potential location, it also was closer to, or outside of their operations, and it made the most sense in terms of finding a, a suitable location on that property.
That was a hundred foot lower than the bridge in, in the area that you were trying to serve?
Correct, which is why it wasn't a candidate that we pursued.
And if, if we put all questions of cost aside, could Vertical Bridge provide wireless communication services using the Ford Construction site? And, and substantially solve, solve its service gap area, so that it's technologically feasible to use this site?
It would provide, in comparison to our current location, it would not cover the coverage objective that we were looking for with this project, the current location will cover the service area that we were evaluating for this project better than the Ford Construction, as well as there are issues from an environmental concern with the Ford location, regardless of where we go on that property.
Environmentally, how intrusive would you consider a site to be if it has residences within five hundred feet in all four compass directions? Including one within five, a hundred and five feet of the, of the branches of the, of the fake tree? What's the minimum additional expense that it would take for you to favor the site with those residences over one without handy electrical power, where there are other complications?
Are, are you referring to the Ford Construction?
Yeah, let's, let's take it as an example.
I, I understand the concerns in terms of, or, or what you're asking in terms of the power, the cost of power, but there's also a significant concern in terms of environmental, crossing a potential wetlands area. In terms of our proposed location, we are complying with CEQA, as well as NEPA, the National Environmental Protection Agency, to comply with all environmental aspects.
I understand, I understand your position, it's just that we've got residences within five hundred feet. We've got cost of supplying the, the necessary power, and another site that does not have residences anywhere nearby is, is zoned for heavy industrial. Okay, where's, where's your balance? What, what do you, how, how do the residences and the people around the residences, how do they balance out the, the additional cost?
I, I.
And let's, forget Ford right now, just, as, when you're looking at these sites, you're, you're doing this balancing act, it's what you just described, act, act sounds like I'm being derogatory, I'm not, that you're doing a balancing process of, let's look at that site, well, that's not so good because of this, let's look at that site, that's not so good because, but here we've got residences within five hundred feet in all four directions, and here we've got additional cost. How much additional cost does it take to balance out over the residences? Well, we'll have to go with this site because it costs us more.
I, I will, I will say that this site in particular that we're at is considered a high-cost site, it, it, it is not, it is more expensive, but aside from cost, I do want to get back to the coverage maps that we provided, the Ford Construction location does not provide the same coverage footprint that the objective was for this service area.
Six hundred and forty-two feet. Okay.
So you could put a taller tower, though?
But if you told us on that location, it would be two hundred feet.
It would, it would be over two hundred feet.
That's what it's done to six forty-two.
What is the height, the tallest tower you can do, I'm just curious of that?
I don't know the tallest, but I've, I've seen two, three hundred feet tow, towers, I don't know if that's something that you would approve, as a, at that point, it wouldn't be a tree.
You'd have to make that a redwood.
Usually, those are, are steel poles or guy wire poles, and they can get much taller, the, the stealthy requirement on those start becoming more difficult. Aside, aside from the coverage object, or the coverage of that Ford Construction would provide, there are environmental concerns, and I, I understand that we're, we're focusing on the cost of it, but I don't want to detract from, we do have a requirement with CEQA, which we provided CEQA, you know, had to go through a CEQA, typically these projects are, are exempt, but because of the red salamander and, and certain things within the area, we were required to go through CEQA, we're required to go through a National Environmental Protection Agency, NEPA, at the federal level, and so when we look at potential environmental concerns, we do take that serious.
And speaking of environmental concerns, you recognize that this is.
Mining site.
That your, your property, that, that your proposed property is in a very high fire hazard severity zone.
Yeah, correct, it appears.
And then, under the PUC standards, it's under a tier-two zone, which is what makes the generator required. What sort of fuel is used in the generator?
Diesel is used, typically these are diesel generators.
What size tank, then, do you have for that?
I'd, I'd have to pull the specs on it, I, I, I don't want to misquote it.
Yeah, and how, how is it protected against fire?
So there is a, there is an enclosure that the generator, it has its own enclosure, and there are certain fire setbacks in terms of potential spark that has to be setback from, so there are specific requirements that fire and building typically issue the permit for, that we have to comply with to make sure that, that it is safe to, to use, and especially in fire, high fire zones.
It was mentioned that, that with a, with a generator, you could provide some acoustical buffering. To protect the neighbors, but you have not proposed.
If necessary.
It, it, yeah, so if necessary, and, and understand that there are some additional potential requirements, and, and so we, we do ask if it's something that the commission would consider is a condition of approval, that we would have to meet county standards and land use code and applicable permits in order, in order to approve it and, and issue it as a condition of approval.
By the way, I note that you have not proposed any sort of noise buffering for the equipment without the generator.
Correct, and we do, we did prepare a noise study with the previous equipment, and was determined that it complied with.
Yeah, but let's talk about that, so it does, it will not violate the Calaveras County Noise Ordinance at the property line, it would not exceed the levels that, that under the, that would constitute, I said, you would not reach levels that would constitute a violation of the Calaveras Noise Ordinance, but these are people that are asleep in their bedrooms, did you go to the property line and measure what the current decibel levels are, daytime and nighttime, at the current, at the, at the property line? Just what the current levels are? Just what the current levels are? Quiet.
Commissioner Ladish, maybe I can interject. In doing your noise analysis, you begin with an ambient noise level, which is what you just described. That is the ambient noise level. And the code will allow you to exceed the ambient noise level to a particular decibel level based on the time of day. So, during the daytime, there really isn't a noise impact per se because of the ambient noise level. Seven PM and onwards, when things are a lot quieter, then, you know, you start making considerations for how noises this noise is sourced.
They were listing for the daytime and the nighttime noise level.
Yes.
All I'm saying is that we just, that they make actual measurement of the noise level at the property. I'm not talking about ambient, I'm just, actual noise level, day and night, at the property line adjoining the nearest residence.
So, we, I believe there are standards for daytime versus nighttime.
I'm not talking about standards, yeah, I'm talking about measure.
Talking about comparison to the actual conditions on-site right now, that's the question.
Just to clarify, is it concerned that because there's less ambient noise, that it would be...
My concern is that it's an extraordinarily quiet place right now. It's, yeah, it's a rural community. And the fact that you wouldn't be violating the noise ordinance is interesting information. But, it would not assuage the concerns of somebody that's trying to sleep in the house, that's been used to the noisiest thing being a raccoon walking across the deck. This is, would be a constant noise. Which, in a rural neighborhood, I don't know if you live in a rural neighborhood, but in a rural neighborhood, that's one of the reasons people are there, is the quiet. And instead, oh, well, we're not going to violate the noise ordinance. It's just a, I think it's something that we can lose sight of very easily.
They have offered to do additional studies, and there are mitigations that could be imposed for that item. So, do you have other issues?
No, I'm fine for now.
Okay.
I think if there's a specific decibel that we need to comply with, or if you want to issue it as a condition of approval, that we meet those noise requirements, whether they're slightly stricter and we have to implement mitigation measures, especially because of the generator.
I think we'll come back and talk about potential mitigation measures. I think that, does anybody need a break?
I think a break would be good.
How about a fifteen-minute break? And we'll come back and we'll give the appellant an opportunity to speak and the public. Thank you. Okay, is the appellant here?
Oh, good morning, still.
Good morning.
I know that there's other people that have other things more pressing and prevalent to say, but I'm going to say this. They want to build this antenna for a thousand potential people.
Susan, we're not getting much of him.
She's talking about volume.
Volume.
Yeah, I know. Sure. My pants do go all the way.
Excuse me, could you please state your name if you come up to do public comment?
Oh, David Oliver. Okay. So, for a potential thousand customers, they want to do this. Honestly, there's something they're not telling us, because to go through all of this, to build that antenna there for potentially a thousand customers, it's not because it's convenient. It's because they're making something on the other end of this deal. But, that's just my thought. I will release the floor and let the other people that have more pressing things to say, let them talk.
Thank you.
And we do have you on the record from the last time, so it hasn't been lost.
So, we're going to open this up for a public comment. I just ask that, if you spoke last time and you don't have anything to add to what you said last time, it's not necessary to come up and repeat it. We heard you the first time we got it. But, if you do have something to add to that, or new information you'd like to share with us, please do take advantage of this time, whether you're pro or con, neutral. We want to hear from everybody. So, who would like to get started?
Hi, my name's William Edson. I live on Clement's Place, across the street from the proposed site. So, I just took a couple notes earlier. One of the things I thought about between last meeting and this one was if we had, you know, Michelle represents District Three, District One, District Two. We don't have a representative for our district, but you can imagine how they would probably vote to represent us. The other stuff was, so I'm a diesel mechanic. I have a mobile diesel repair business, and I work on a lot of diesel generators. So, I know a lot about them. From what I, the research I did, a cell tower site like that, ninety-foot cell tower, would require a fifteen kilowatt generator. A fifteen kilowatt diesel generator produces eighty-three decibels, which is the same as a diesel train passing by at forty-five miles an hour a hundred feet away. That's at the generator. So, you know, you get further away from it, it gets quieter, of course. The, okay, the CCWD Tower was, I've been to David's house, the appellate. The CCWD water tower in question, we're looking up at it from his house, so it's not lower in elevation. And it couldn't be, because then it wouldn't provide, all the water is gravity flow down to the houses there. So, we have to be lower to get water pressure. The only other thing was, Don had mentioned that they weren't thorough. It's not that they're not thorough, they're deceitful. They're trying to trick you and get what they want. But, that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name's Kelly Cannell. I'm a real estate agent with Century Twenty-One in Valley Springs. Several of us had sent letters in regarding our concern about property values in the area. I also sent a document called a seller property questionnaire. It's something that the California Association of Realtors strongly suggests that our sellers give to our buyers prior to purchasing. It's something that can be given to a potential buyer after escrow, but it also can be given to a buyer prior to. And buyers use this to negotiate price on a property. One of the items on the seller property questionnaire, I'm going to read two just brief comments. One is a note to the seller, and it states, "To the buyer about known material or significant items affecting the value and desirability of the property, and help to eliminate misunderstandings about the condition of the property." So, that's a note to seller. The note to buyer states, "To give you more information about known material or significant items affecting the value or desirability of the property." This is page one. Page four specifically says, "Neighborhood. Neighborhood noise, nuisance, or other problems from sources such as, but not limited to, the following. Neighbors' traffic, parking congestion, airplanes, trains, light rail, subway trucks, freeways, buses, schools, parks, storage, landfill processing, agricultural operations, business odor, recreational facilities, restaurants, entertainment complexes, facilities, parades, sporting events, fairs, neighborhood parties, litter, construction, air conditioning or equipment, air compressors, generators, pool equipment or appliances, underground gas pipelines, I'm sorry, pipelines, cell phone towers, high voltage transmission lines, or wildlife." These are things that we consider affect property values. In particular, two years ago, I had a listing in Ione, forty-acre parcel, five-thousand-square-foot home in Jackson Valley. Very desirable area gated community, had a cell phone tower on it. My seller sold the site for a cell phone tower. I had it on the market for over a year, 1.35 million. Every person that came and looked at it chose not to write an offer. They didn't like the tower. We lowered the price, eventually sold it for just over a million. That property was sold to an individual who was renting it as a short-term rental, an Airbnb. So, it significantly affected the value. And that tower was income-producing for my client. So, the second thing, three months ago, I had a listing in Ione on Edgebrook, 325 Edgebrook, residential neighborhood, had a generator in the front. This generator was owned by the city of Ione. It functioned in an emergency for sewer and water. It was maintained once a week. I was there for a month straight, running crews of guys that did paint and carpet and remodeled the kitchen. The maintenance individual came once a week. He opened up the generator, he put in additives, he started the generator. Didn't start it at night, but during the day. I significantly remember neighbors walking dogs by, saying, "What a nuisance that was." "Why do they have to start it once a week?" And he said, "Because if there's an emergency, I have to know this thing's going to come on and run." Affected the property value. Once again, lowered the price because the generator was a nuisance. Anyone that bought the home had to know, and I had to disclose, and so did the seller, that that generator was going to come on often. It was for a few minutes, but it was often. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Hello, my name is Justin Slavich, and I own a house on Crossley Court with my wife and two-year-old son. We are really against this cell tower for a couple reasons. I sent in a large package to you guys, I hope you had a chance to read that. And in that package were three studies on home prices and cell phone towers. The first one, which is sort of the big one that everyone turns to, by Sandy Bond, said, "This study summarizes that overall respondents would pay like, from ten to nineteen percent less to over twenty percent less for a property if it were close proximity to a tower." The other results, or other studies are very similar in their findings. I gave you guys a spreadsheet as well, that kind of gave an estimate on what percentage it would affect us. The study provided by the applicant from Valbridge Properties, I want to point out that their study is focused in large cities from 500,000 to 1.5 million people, and is not a good representation of our area. I think that's it, all the other guys covered the rest and stuff.
Somebody else?
Good morning. Just do not touch it.
No, I should explain, there's a sign saying, "Don't touch it."
I know, but it's...
We'll probably hear you from...
I was intimidated, I suppose. Good morning, planning director and planning commissioner. Colleen Platt with myvalleysprings.com. Undoubtedly, you've received at least three letters and lots of attachments from us. I hope you've had time to go through them. Thank you for accepting more comments. And we also have additional concerns into what we've submitted that we have not heard addressed yet. There was a mention of plastics and microplastics. The cell tower person said there won't be any microplastics. This is the first I've heard of that. If that's so, could we have a condition on the project? That no PVC will be used in the manufacturing of the cell?
I don't think that's what they said. I think they said that there would be no microplastics shed from the tower.
Oh, well, microplastics come from plastics that fall on the ground, and they break down into...
I think they said that there was a study, and Tahoe looked at it, and they did not lose pieces of the specific brand of towers that they are contemplating. Would you like to clarify? Is that, am I describing that properly?
Yes.
Okay, that's the first we've heard of any particular brand that would not have any microplastics, so we would request documentation.
There are no microplastics. It's not shedding any microplastics over the course of years that they studied it.
Okay. I'm sure you did get the pictures that we sent of a cell tower that did shed its leaves all over the ground, and I assumed they were plastics and that they would break down into micro... So, I would still like that to be addressed. We've talked about the aesthetic impacts, the noise impacts, and thank you very much for bringing that up again. The sixty-eight decibels, I believe, that was originally studied in the noise report attached, does exceed what is allowed in noise-sensitive areas with the existing noise levels very low, as you mentioned, Michelle. And we would like them to use baffled noise, you know, something to reduce noise. This is a terrible impact to people who live in an area with no noise there. And especially if a generator's added, then this will be, I think that should be an additional environmental study for the generators. There's also a future colocation equipment that will be on the site that will also add decibel levels to the noise. And they need to include the impacts of the colocation equipment that's planned in addition to the generator. Let me see, the future carriers, yeah, please address the future carriers there. The noise impacts, the backup power impacts, both noise and odor. The alternative site, this is the first we've heard about crossing a wetlands. I wish there would have been more information provided on these sites. The Calaveras River is between the road and the quarry. Do they mean they want to cross the river? What's the problem? Because there is power at the quarry itself, so I don't understand the wetlands issue. We brought up, some of the residents brought up safety concerns about the actual height of the equipment, the ninety-foot height, and, you know, whether it could fall, you know, on the house next door. And we also mentioned in our letter that there are national construction standards for telecommunications equipment. There's nothing in the construction documents, there are no construction documents or standards mentioned, and we would like that to be a condition of any telecommunications tower, that they would follow the National NCTIA Standard 222, which studies the foundations and engineering, the wind loads from highest velocity winds in the area. Next to the river canyon, it's a very windy area. Seismic factors, stability to support its own weight, plus the weight of all the metal antenna towers that will be located and co-located in the future. With the winds, I don't know how thirty-foot is that much of a protection from a ninety-foot tower with a lot of antennas on there. So, we would like those conditions of construction to be included by reference in the plans and conditions. Any professional engineer should be registered in the state of California, not just a national engineer. This is California standards to comply with. We mentioned, maintenance plan should be a condition. Obviously, the needles, the branches fall with, over time, and with storms and the wind. And they've been found on the property underneath. It needs to be, I looked on the website of one of the manufacturers, and they said they had one-year warranty on the branches. One-year warranty, that's a very long time. So, we need better standards than that. And also, when this equipment, things change. It may become obsolete, this site may become obsolete at some point, you know, fifteen, twenty years down the road. Who's going to do a reclamation on this site? As you're talking about, major construction and foundation concrete being installed in a residential rural area. I just want to look at that sort of thing also. Again, we don't like the site. It's, originally, it was sixty feet from the house next door. That's what the initial study stated, that the residence was sixty feet away from the equipment. If they've moved it, there's their current plans, maybe they've moved it, but...
It was sixty feet from the center line of their facilities to the property line, not from the house next... from the house next door, in their original report, I believe. Is that correct?
Anyway, the initial, yeah.
It appears to be in the same location.
Well, they're calling it 105 feet now, so...
They're giving you dimensions now to the adjacent home.
Right. No, it did say in the original initial study, it was a public works letter and the initial study, there's 20 feet from the property line, 40 feet to the equipment pad. So that was 60 feet away, and that was in the initial study, so...
The center line, from the property line to the center line of the equipment. So there's a lot of different measurements bandied about in your letters and reports.
Yeah, but I'm...
And I believe that the neighbor thought that his house was closer to his own bound, the boundary between these two parcels than it actually turned out to be.
Okay. And whatever it is, whether it's 60 feet or 80 feet, it's really, really close to the existing residence, and, you know, we just don't believe this belongs in a rural residential area. If you do can move it, that would be great, to an alternate location, or at least add project conditions to adequately mitigate all of these impacts that we've pointed out to you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Susan's going to fix that.
Good morning. My name's Candy Strube, and I live on Kane Lane. I spoke before, but I looked down onto where this tower's going to be. I actually am wondering, though, the 1,100 people, how many of these people use T-Mobile? Are all these people T-Mobile? Whatever. And how tall is the elevation of the proposed tower? No one mentioned how tall the tower's going to be. We're thinking maybe 620 to 630 feet. So the quarry's at 700 feet, and if it has to get over a 742-foot ridge, and it's only at 620 to 630 feet, I mean, these numbers don't, they don't comprehend. Yeah. My other concern is the generator. When I'm out on my back porch, if someone below me has a chainsaw going, a lawnmower, any kind of equipment, it's loud at my house. I can't imagine what a generator would sound like, let alone the fumes that come from the generator. When people burn in our area, the smoke settles down in that valley, and generator diesel fumes are horrible smelling, and they will just linger down in that valley, which eventually comes up and comes into my house. So those are my concerns. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for considering our community. I spoke last time. My name is Natasha Hamilton. I live on Crocell Court, and I operate Acorns to Oaks Micro School, serving 50 children per week, weekdays eight to three. I sent a survey to the students' parents, asking if the cell tower's installed, would they unenroll or continue enrollment, and if they marked unenroll, what their reasons were. Aesthetically unappealing, fire and safety risk, health concerns, or all of the above. Of the respondents, 18 families chose unenroll and all of the above. This amounts to 37% of revenue lost. Losing that amount of revenue would shut down our micro school. We established our micro school four years ago as an enrichment program for homeschool children to learn, build friendships, and have community. It serves as a primary place of learning for some children and a supplemental place for homeschoolers. My husband and I struggled and sacrificed to establish the micro school so that our homeschooled son could have a wholesome place to make friends and learn. We have sunk our lives and our finances, invested not just into learning spaces and modifications to accommodate children, but also farm infrastructure. Establishing a customer base in such a niche market has been extremely difficult, and we just turned a profit in the last two years. If the tower goes in, the school would shut down, and we would be forced to relocate. If we can stay in California, we would need at least six months to move, rebuild a school and farm, and hopefully reestablish enrollment. Most of our investment into our property would not be returned upon selling the property. The loss of investment into the property, temporary loss of my income, cost of moving, cost to reestablish a farm and micro school, and decreased income upon reopening would be upwards of six figures. We just couldn't afford that. My two children and our community would lose our micro school. The other economic impact, of course, would be the loss in property value for the nearby residents. As my husband explained in his letter, and local established realtors, experts in their field confirmed, that large infrastructure causes property devaluation in our area. The exact percent of the proposed tower and for our area is unknown because there are no comparables for a reason. It's not a matter of whether or not there is property devaluation. It's a matter of how much devaluation. Property devaluation is not just due to fear of EMF, rather, it is simply due to proximity to large infrastructure. Contrary to the application, there is no disguising a 90-foot tower among much shorter oaks. The location in the middle of, the location is in the middle of a valley on three sides and slightly elevated on a little hill surrounded by oak trees. On one side is a steep, heavily vegetated canyon going down to the Calaveras River. That's where the references about pine trees are, and at a much lower elevation and not nearby, as they said. And the pine trees would in no way hide the tower. The pictures provided by the applicant seem to be intentionally deceptive. They are taken from a lower elevation and use little hills or trees to obscure the Photoshop tower. There are much clearer vantage points that could have been provided that wouldn't be hiding behind an obstruction. On Crocell Court, there are no possible obstructions. In the applicant's picture from Crocell Court, it very much appears that the Photoshop tower is too small to be 90 feet. It looks about half that size. Only someone familiar with the area would know this. I know this can be difficult to know for sure. With the large lots in our area, the size can be difficult to see from the road from three acres away. And if anybody wanted to visit our property for a closer look, you're more than welcome. I sent pictures from our property, which would show David Oliver's residence and the surrounding oak trees. The oak trees are sparse, and they look maybe double the height of David Oliver's residence, not very tall. There are no sparse, there are no pine trees within view except at a neighboring property. And the pictures that I took, I climbed on top of my roof to get a very high vantage point, and the one pine tree within view sticks out like a sore thumb, and it's only about the height of our neighbor's two-story residence. Glaringly missing from the applicant's presentation are pictures from the actual site. I think that that would be very helpful. The pictures that I took would have to suffice because that's the best that we could do with what we've got. As Stephen Martez, a firefighter for Alameda County, said last hearing, "Our fire department does not have the needed equipment if the cell tower catches fire." These towers are electrical machines and prone to failure. Cell towers are named as partial or whole causes in three wildfires. Just last September, a cell tower in Sacramento caught fire. We sent links and pictures of that. There are plenty more examples on YouTube. The tower would be too close to the heavily vegetated canyon. We already experience such a high fire risk and have so much difficulty obtaining home insurance. We can't afford any more risk. And as a side note, our garage burnt down to the ground a couple of years ago. I had no problem calling emergency services, and they picked up my phone call. They heard my words very clearly. They got there immediately. The applicant said the tower would comply with code for structural integrity and have a 30-foot fall radius. The internet is full of pictures of these types of towers falling at the base. Our high winds in winter storms and the foundation built into rock would make a catastrophic falling event more likely. There are plenty of falling incidents reported to OSHA, but as OSHA said as well, there are more unreported. With four residences and a school within a couple hundred feet, a falling or fire event could be catastrophic. To mitigate risk, to mitigate fire and falling risk, a tower should go in an open space, and there's plenty of open space in our area. Although the fire department signed off on the application and it meets code, there seems to be a gap in the code. We are asking for a common sense approach to this concern. We are also concerned about health effects of nearby residences, especially the children. I won't go into details, but there's plenty of research showing negative health effects on people, especially the vulnerable, children, seniors, and medically compromised, as well as wild and domestic animals, including bees. We all know that industries can use sneaky tactics to hide negative effects of their product, including paying for their own research that shows no negative effect and buying...
Excuse me. We cannot consider, because of federal law, we cannot consider health effects from radiation from this proposed tower. So it does not help us at all to hear anything about radiation effects, health effects.
Understood. I, I think that if the sneaky tactics are understood, we could take an outside view from this and kind of see it more clearly. There's so much harm from this tower going in, property devaluation, closure of a micro school, aesthetic loss of our countryside, fire and falling risk, and possible health effects. There is very little gain, a hefty paycheck for the applicant, but our cell service for very few T-Mobile customers and potential profit for T-Mobile. We demonstrated how the applicant has holes in their story. It was just that this site seems to be the easiest and cheapest, probably because it already has utilities. I left a petition last hearing with over 200 signatures of residents or folks who frequent or live part-time in the area who are opposed to the tower. It only took a week to gather those signatures. We probably know, we don't want this chaos for our small town. We don't want the bad publicity. We all know each other through one or two degrees of separation. We'll continue to fight this. Several towers have had to be removed due to community uproar. We have given plenty of reason to deny this tower. Please stop it at this point.
Hello, my name is Katie Murdis. I'm a homeschooling mom of four. This is my children's fourth consecutive year at Acorns to Oaks Farm School. Farm School is where my children receive their homeschool instruction for art, science, and practical skills. This is also where they've made incredible lifelong friendships. My children look forward to Farm School every single week. As a parent, my biggest concern with the proposed location of the tower is the health and safety risk it could have on my children. We know that towers like these increase the risk for fire. In a town where residents are constantly being dropped from insurance due to the risk of fires, how can we knowingly place a tower in a residential neighborhood with only one road going in and out where children are present daily? This is a disaster waiting to happen. I'm also concerned with the health risks associated with my children being close to a tower. I know that you guys can't take that into consideration, but we as parents will take it into consideration, and we will be forced to disenroll from this school, which we love, in order to keep our kids safe. Please take into consideration the major negative impact this is going to have on the Hamilton Small Business, and as parents, please don't put us in the position of having to choose between our children's education and their safety. Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Hi, my name is Karen Blaisdell. I'm a registered nurse and mother of three children that attend Acorns to Oaks Farm School. I know there's a rule you can't consider health and safety, but that in itself is a big red flag. It shows something's not right. As a nurse, I see many patients suffering from things that were also once said to be safe. There's constant recalls on medications and medical products. California just banned food ingredients that were previously said to be safe. Science is constantly evolving, and new information is being discovered. They can only make an educated guess based on the information they have at that time, or in this case, information from the 90s. Technology and medical knowledge have come a long way since then, so to not have any updated guidelines or research is alarming. Even the American Cancer Society states that cellphone towers have not been proven to be absolutely safe, and that more research is needed, especially for possible long-term effects. I do not want to be a part of this research, and I'm not going to let my children be a part of this research. And I think the lack of interest of responses and people willing to have a cell tower on their property shows a lack of interest and others' concerns. If this tower goes up, our school will shut down. The parents here today have already made a lot of tough decisions to protect our children and do the best for them, and we will continue to make those tough decisions, even if that means leaving our lovely farm school. I have already sacrificed my full-time career and income. Our family has already taken a significant hit to our finances and are struggling in this economy. Acorns to Oaks has been a gift to my family. It provides a safe place for my kids to go a few times a week and continue on their homeschool work while I can go to work those days to provide more income for our family. When this school closes, I will lose that. I will lose that time to work and will lose that income. This will be detrimental to my family. The decision to install this tower in this location will have a significant negative impact that will ripple through our community and affect dozens of families. The job losses this would cause is more significant cost, I think, than the cost of putting the tower somewhere else, paying for more height and paying for power lines to get there. Besides these concerns, there's also the looks to consider. You've decorated with some beautiful landscape photos of our rural community. There's no cell towers photographed as beautiful. There's no fake trees on the horizon, because metal and plastic cannot be a tree. The applicant might not see any difference between their monopine tower and our actual native trees, but we in Calaveras County can tell the difference between a fake tree and a real tree. This is an inappropriate location for a cell tower. It should never be installed in a neighborhood. It's not just open space. These are homes, our friends, neighbors, and community, and it should not be going in someone's backyard. The location is closer to the appealing's house, Mr. Oliver, than it is to the property owner. And they keep saying it's 116 feet away or 105 feet away, like it's a huge distance. I have garden hoses, 100 feet. That's not, it's not that far. It's not a big, a big distance, 100 feet. So Mr. Oliver gets the worst view, the most invasion of space, and the most risk, and he doesn't even get the financial benefit that the property owner does. We don't need a cell tower in this area. The service here is good enough already. No one's come in the past, I don't know if they're here today, to claim they have inadequate cell service. No one's come in support of the tower. I was going to talk about the fire at Natasha, so she already hit on that, that everybody was able to call 911, the neighbors, people driving by on the street, their service. I have service in that area with AT&amp;T, and they talked about co-sharing towers. Can't they find where that tower is and co-share with the tower that's already there, already providing service? If there are residents in the area that think they need better service, then there's also an option to install their own cell signal booster on their own house. This would amplify the signal for them if they feel they have weak service without affecting others. Since they've said that there is coverage, it's just weak, you could amplify that signal. So there's no need for this tower, and the risks and negative impacts far outweigh any perceived benefits. I hope the Planning Commission can see this and do what they can do to stop it, and I hope that Vertical Bridge can see this and be kind and responsible with their money and power and choose a more appropriate location. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Howdy. My name's Stephen Murdis, Valley Springs resident. My children go to the preschool next to the property. And a couple of concerns. I am a fireman by trade, and I have a few questions. Curious who from the fire prevention had to sign off on the project and what criteria was on that form, and if we could have access to that? was on that form, and if we could have access to that? If I was Mr. Oliver, I would demand to see what kind of criteria is required by the fire department, being so close to the property. My main concern is did they account for any target hazards in the area? This could be the schools, hospitals, you know, daycares, you know, residential care homes, stuff like that. Do they, were they aware that there's a preschool just a few hundred feet from the, from the tower? Those are some of my concerns, so curious if there's anything that could be provided that we could look at.
I have a question for you, Murdis. You're cited, and I think you've submitted material to us indicating that the local fire department does not have equipment sufficient to, to fight a fire near the top of this proposed tower? Is that, is that accurate, sort of what you're saying?
They don't have any aerial, aerial ladders, or really, they're, they're down to hand lines, and they wouldn't be able to cast water up 90 feet into the air. Another concern is just from a staffing perspective, they're running lean all the time, which is everyone-
I can answer that question for him real quick. Fire engine is not getting up my driveway, period, end of story. They might have to go to the neighbor's house and then hop the fence, but an engine is not getting up my driveway.
So, so that was something I was going to bring up. The proposed road going up the property for the easement, it looks pretty steep. I would be concerned, I've driven multiple fire apparatus, I would be concerned driving a fire engine up there on a side, the side of a hill, gravel hill, I would presume, but we don't know what kind of runoff from water and what kind of issues we could have gaining access to that site. My other concern is that Mr. Oliver's home's closer to the tower than the property owner. My concern is, do they have a way to protect his property? Because I don't see any access to get fire apparatus between his home and the tower site. So that would be my concern. So I would-
You haven't discussed this with the local fire department, correct?
Me?
Yeah.
I have not. I don't even know who signs off for the, like, the permits for it. So that would be something I'd be curious if you guys knew. That's kind of some of my concerns. I know, I've been to fires where, where tall towers are casting embers off in a distance and can, and catching little spot fires, you know, up to a quarter mile away. So that's something that's a factor. We know we have high winds in the area. I was a little unimpressed by their collapse zone that they, that they had. I think they said 60 feet, maybe it was 30 feet, and I think that's due to a sheer point that they've designed into it, so hopefully just partial collapse happens. But that's not taking into account the wind can blow it further. You know, a typical collapse distance for the fire department is 100, is 1.5 times the distance from the structure. So we know Mr. Oliver's residence, or at least his property, is for sure within that distance. So I'm curious if the fire department is aware of that and what kind of criteria they have for setbacks, collapse zones, things like that, and what their fire prevention plan is. Part of the, part of the issue with, with fire prevention is, do they have a, like a site safety plan or any, usually on these, like, target areas or hazardous areas, there's a, they pre-plan to, if something happens, so they can deal with the situation. Is there a site safety plan or any kind of plan in place for if something does happen? I'm assuming probably you can't answer that right now, but these are things to look into, and I just don't want it to be overlooked. We know we have ignition sources, we have, you know, electrical ignition sources, we have a diesel generator, we have trucks going up and down the road, and, and then between the tower and the preschool that my children are at, light flashy fuels, it's grass during fire season, that fire is going to spread there within minutes easily. And there's no, there's no good, there's no good means of egress for the children. So I don't know if that's something that's been considered by this committee or by the fire department. They might, the fire department might not have even been aware of the preschool being in proximity, so those are some of my concerns, take or leave it. But I don't know if you can answer any of the questions about, like, a site safety plan or who, you know, a form that the fire department had to sign. Would you be aware of that right now, or do you have access to that?
We're not here to answer questions, so-
Okay.
We'll try to get answers for you if they're available when we come back to the commission.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Hi.
Hello, my name is Tiffany Slavich. I live on Crossell Court also, with my husband, Justin, and our two-year-old, and I am also, I'm a critical care nurse. So I have a few concerns regarding this tower, one of it being, I know we can't speak about health concerns related to EMF, however, there are health concerns related to stress, which are real health concerns. Stress has been known to cause cardiovascular injuries. There's Takasibos, which is stress-induced cardiomyopathy. I used to work in open heart surgery, and it's something that we see pretty often. Stress can cause cognitive effects on children and adults. And there's a lot of things in regards to this tower that will cause us stress and have caused, I think, all of us here, significant amounts of stress. Not only the eyesore of, you know, we moved to this scenic location so that we could come out after working hard stressful jobs, you know, firefighters, nurses, there's a lot of people in this community that have very stressful jobs that moved to this community to create a space of peace and relaxation, so that when we come home, our homes are reprieves for us, they're places for us to relax and unwind and take a deep breath in. You know, our home is located right above the river, across the street from where this cell tower is going to be located, and when I open my windows during the day and when I go out onto my back deck, I listen to the sounds of the river. That's part of why we bought our home and why we moved to this location, is for the ambient noise, as you call it, for us to be able to hear the flow of the river, the birds, you know, singing outside, the wind rustling in the trees, not to hear vibrations from a cell tower or noise from loud generators going off at all times of the day. We in fact had power outage just, what was it, a year or two ago that lasted several days. Having to deal with several days of a loud generator being on throughout all times of night is what I would call a lot of stress, that can cause bad health effects on all of us here. As I also stated, you know, stress can be from the financial loss that we're all going to experience if this cell tower goes up, you know, them losing a lot of their business, financial stress of us, you know, if we ever decide to move, we're a young family. I mean, who knows where our jobs and careers may take us if we decide to try to sell our home, and then the impact of losing that amount of financial, of monetary value from our property value. It can cause a significant amount of stress. Also, as a critical care nurse, I actually have an on-call position where I am required to respond into the hospital within an hour and have reliable cell service, which I do have, living across from this tower. I've had Verizon and I've had AT&amp;T, and I've never had a problem receiving on-call phone calls to come into the hospital for emergency situations, which I'm on call at least once a week for the past six years that I've lived there. The other thing is, these oak trees that we're trying to take into consideration, trying to help this pine tree blend, these oak trees are deciduous. They don't have leaves all year round, so saying that these oak trees are disguising this giant tower that's going to have, you know, leaves all year round is ridiculous. These trees, like, you know, for a good, like, a quarter of the year, lose all of their leaves, they block nothing from our property. I've walked around our property in the last couple of weeks from different vantage points, from the base of our driveway, from the top of our driveway, from our back porch, from the porch outside of our bedroom, from keeping our windows open from my living room. I can see clearly this cell tower, which is in a flat outcropping of rocks. There's no trees surrounding or concealing this cell tower location from our home. We would be able to see it from every vantage point of our property. That in itself is creating an enormous amount of undue stress on me and my family, and I would like that to be taken into consideration, just how stressful this cell tower going up would be on our community. I don't think, like you said before, that anybody has a problem with increased cell service. I think that is, that's important for any community, be able to access emergency services. But as they've explained, we've had two fires actually on our street, one on the corner of Baldwin and Crossell, as well as the one on Natasha's property, and they've never had a problem receiving emergency care services phone calls. So to say that this cell tower is going to, you know, provide an extraordinary amount of cell service to our community is a little facetious in itself. I, when I looked at the map from the SEC, the broadband map, which shows the areas of houses that do not have cell service, there was only four or five in this dead zone, and I think four out of the five actually had, were able to get Verizon cell service. Only one of them was, showed that it didn't have any cell service. So I can understand that it's going to expand the cell service for some, but as I stated, as an on-call critical care provider, I have never had problems receiving cell service at my house, which is in a supposed dead zone. So just all things I'd like to be taken into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Sorry, just really quick, I wanted to add that my husband and I have been with T-Mobile service for 10 years now, and we moved here three, four years ago, and we've never once considered switching because our service has been just fine. Just wanted to add that as a current T-Mobile user, we have no complaints.
Is there anyone else who's now inspired to speak?
Hi, I'm Ken Hamilton. I don't think I have anything to add, I just echo all the sentiments from, from all the community members. Alternative sites are not, this is not the responsible place to put this tower, there's way too many dangers. I also wanted to just kind of open myself up for any questioning, if you had any, and also to confirm that you all got my email, which was a bit lengthy, I understand, and were able to read that.
I have a question.
Sure.
You mentioned, as far as the Ford Construction Site, you mentioned in one of your submissions that you talked with a person there?
Yeah, a couple of times, Jerry Milton.
And they had not, he had not heard of this situation before your conversation? Could you go into that?
Sure, yeah. I'll also go so far as to say I had no trouble contacting any of the alternative site property owners. So quick, a couple of phone calls and a voicemail, and they got back to me, so it wasn't difficult to do. Kind of adds to the strange circumstances about why this, Vertical Bridge is so adamant about this one site. Yeah, I called Jerry Milton, and, and he said what I had mentioned in my letter, that he had never heard from Vertical Bridge or been contacted by any cellphone tower provider, cell provider, or whatever you want to call them, facility, construction, agency, whatever it is, and that he would actually be open to having a tower on his property. And so that was one of a couple of the different folks on the alternative site list. As you know, if you read my letter, were open to having. Were there any others that you spoke with that were open to it? Yeah. Who, who were they, though? Chris- Site, what, site number? Oh, shoot.
Two.
Yeah.
Site Q is Chris Seewell.
That's correct, Site 2, Alternative 2. And I'd also like to point out, it's a little unscrupulous to be adding alternative sites that are outside the search ring. Wouldn't you say, like, hey, I've got 30 sites, but 18 of them are outside the search ring? What's the point of the search ring? Additionally, if the search ring is shifted just a little bit, why don't we have any data on what the potential customer base is? If it drops from 1100 to 1050, if they move it a quarter mile, why isn't that data available to you guys making an informed decision here? It's strange to me, and I mentioned also in my letter, the fact this is a site ring makes no sense. All literature I read online says that the topography kind of dictates where the signal goes. So this is down in a bowl, this is why they're having to use such a tall tower in that bowl. To the south there, impeded completely by ridges that are 170 feet taller, the water tank, I didn't hear any discussion about the water tank at 6444 Schmidt Place, it's got access by Schmidt Place and Harding Road. That seemed like a great candidate site, and CCWD is open to having a tower on that site. So kind of, it, there's a lot of strange stuff about, about this tower project, but again, to be perfectly honest with you, I don't, I care about having good cell service as much as anybody here, but whatever the reasons are against alternate sites, that doesn't make this a good site. Any, any other questions about the Ford Construction Site?
Not unless you have something to volunteer.
No, I, you know, I don't, I don't know about the details on the, on the elevations that were being used, this 200 to 300-foot tower thing that they're talking about, you know, to me, it's like, you know, run a couple poles up to the top of the quarry, of the tower up there, and you can use a 50-foot tower, right? Like, I don't want to get into details, I'm not the R.F.N. chair, I'm not constructing this project. I have intimate knowledge of construction projects, but I haven't evaluated the site myself personally. I get, the only other one curious thing that I wanted to mention is, there's a lot of bullet points on the submittal that was presented to the commission on March 6th, the rebuttal submittal, that talked about the environmental concerns, the lack of environmental concerns, said that there would be no trees downed or removed for this project, which is kind of funny. If you look at Google Earth and you zoom in on the site, there are several trees knocked down, young oaks that are already knocked down. It's like, somebody may have gotten wind that this may be a cellphone tower site, and to avoid environmental impacts, went and knocked down some oak trees that are clearly visible. I could provide you with those emails, or you can look on Google Earth yourself. But that's the case. It's also a very steep road. They talk about this being a flat grading site without much environmental impact, that is not the case. There are so many topo lines on that map that they showed you guys, like, it's, it's like a 20 or 30% incline over there, it's nuts. So, thank you very much.
I want to say I appreciate the, the children were very well behaved. Thank you very much.
That's the school and the parents there.
Thank you, everybody. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Real quick.
You've already spoken, so, thank you. We've heard from you twice, I think, last time and this time, so, come on up.
My name is Kat. I live on Kane Lane. This proposed site is directly in my view. The entire property is in our view. It's extremely alarming that such poor planning has led to the proposal of this cellphone tower in our residential neighborhood. I'm asking the committee to reconsider the location entirely. I'm very concerned with the fire and electric hazard a wireless facility would impose. There are residential homes on both sides of this hill. To date, there have been three fires directly related to the failures of cellphone towers in California. On the Calaveras County Fire Severity Zones, we are directly in the high-risk areas of concern on the map. Many insurance companies are raising rates and dropping clients in this zone for this reason. Adding a wireless facility would greatly increase this already high-fire risk area. Given this particular area is in a canyon and factoring in the high winds that can come up to 60 miles per hour, and coming through a canyon can increase the speeds of those winds, the high temperatures up to 110 degrees, it's not a safe location for electrical facilities. In the email I sent, I attached a picture, the view of our family lot. The unsightly tower would be in our direct site. When I type in 5992 on Google Maps, it says it's 125 feet from our property boundary. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Guidelines categorize cell towers as hazards and nuances, excuse me, nuisances, and has required certified appraisers to take into consideration the presence of nearby cell towers when determining the value of residential properties. Adding a tower would directly impact property values, decreasing as much as 20%. Another important consideration is that wireless companies need access for maintenance 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. The construction and maintenance of such a facility- The construction and maintenance of such a facility requires work crews, trucks with lifts, radios, lights, and noise that will create light and noise pollution affecting many neighbors. A major reason for choosing to live in this location was the scenic views and sounds of nature. It would be disheartening to see that change with the installation of a tower, cellphone tower. It's very unsettling to know that the guidelines for safe levels of radio frequency haven't been updated by the FCC since 1996. Despite claims that they're safe, the U.S. Department of Interior has stated the electromagnetic radiation standards used by the FCC continue to be based on thermal heating, a criteria now nearly 30 years out of date and inapplicable today. Many other countries limit exposure levels far lower than the current standard set by the FCC. This wireless facility would be an extreme health hazard to our community in this aspect as well. Rather than a residential neighborhood, I urge you to please further explore other proposed locations away from our communities, children, small farms, and growing families. Given the fire and electric hazard reductions of home and land values, the visual and environmental impact, it's unconscionable that it is placed here. Thank you so much for your attention and consideration.
Going once, going twice. Is there anybody left? Yeah. Annette, is there anybody online?
No, online, public comment.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to close the public comment portion of the meeting, and we will give the original applicant, Article Bridge, an opportunity to answer questions or rebut things that you heard today.
Thank you. I know there were a lot of comments that were made that are heartfelt, for sure, but also an attempt to do an end-around against the prohibition of having agencies or jurisdictions regulate these facilities based on the effects or perceived effects of RF energy. Again, the, this project has to comply with the FCC's RF energy standards. A detailed study of the RF energy was done and showed that this project is just about 2% of the limit that the FCC sets, which is a very conservative standard. It was a standard developed in 1996, but in 2013, the FCC engaged in a six-year process to do some analysis, and in 2019, December of 2019, they reaffirmed these standards as setting an appropriate health-safety standard. So, again, the, we have provided information with respect to the alternative site analysis. The, if you, if you have a coverage gap in a residential area, it's very likely that the facility to serve that gap and to eliminate that gap is going to have to be in a residential area. There may be a misperception that we can just put these cell facilities out in some, you know, backwards, out-of-place areas, and that they can serve a particular coverage objective where a gap exists, and that's just not true. The evolution of cell towers over the last, you know, decades has gone from putting one big tower up in one central location and being able to serve miles, kind of the City of Anna Cortez decision, which, which you've read, to now, these facilities, you need a lot of them to handle very, they're still big areas, but they're focused areas. And you can't just put some big tower somewhere, throw a ton of antennas on it, and blow them out at, you know, 1,000% maximum power and just cover an area. The, the cell facilities have to be placed so that they don't have cross-interference with each other. If you put two facilities next to each other, it effectively creates a gap because the cell signals are conflicting with each other, and anyone who has a cellphone in there or a wireless device that's trying to connect can't figure out whether I'm going to connect to this tower or to this tower. So there has to be a spacing of these towers, and here we have a gap in the Valley Springs residential area, and we've looked at alternatives, but there aren't any that allow T-Mobile to fill the gap in the best way, serving the most customers with one facility. So we're happy to answer any additional questions you have.
Can you tell us the elevation where the proposed tower is?
636, ground-level elevation.
So significantly lower than the 742.
Correct.
Being cited as an impediment to using the Ford.
Right, because, so, the proposed facility is well south of that 742 location and is serving a coverage objective that is south, mostly south of that 742 elevation.
Well, that doesn't really jive much with the maps. I mean, you're showing us this ring and the coverage. Let me look. Shows it dead center in the area that you're hoping to cover.
And I keep looking at Google Maps, and, and I'm checking elevations that are closer to where the river runs there, and it seems accessible and higher. And I'm just having a hard time understanding why we only have six alternates, and some of them were outside the coverage area, and then some of them are too far away, I guess, not to get some of your coverage, but to get all of your coverage. And it just seems like in the area closer to where you're proposing it, I, I just don't know why some of those options weren't considered, or at least are not shown on here that they were considered, that are in other, more rural, still in residential, but more rural, along the river's edge.
That'd be to, to the east?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, Bill would have to provide some information about the alternative.
There's some wide-open space right there that has got pretty great elevation.
Right.
And it seems like there's residences nearby that may have potential power that could be run. I'm just wondering why they weren't considered. I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around the fact that you guys didn't actually make contact with people, and yet you said that they weren't.
Are you referring to the open space to the east of the river?
I believe so.
Yes, and I did have a conversation with, with Mr. Elliott, because that was brought up when, when we met to discuss alternative sites, and, and I explained the constraints in terms of getting feasible access as well as power. We have to bring primary power and place a new generator, not a generator, transformer. PG&E requires that. So we can't necessarily tap into an existing transformer, so we have to bring it from the nearest primary. There were significant constraints, and Mr. Elliott agreed with me during that meeting, of looking at feasible alternatives in that area.
And referring to your coverage maps, can you tell us which slide that is, that you could, we could bring that up? The comparison between your present, present location, project location, and the Ford?
We don't have that digitally. That was, we got that at late yesterday.
Looking at that?
Yes.
You have that available?
I have that, yes, I have it here.
Okay. I know you don't have your ring on the, on the project location coverage, proposed coverage, but I've tried to draw it in, just comparing the various maps, and it looks like in the project location map, coverage map, between, if we view this as a clock, between about 10:30 and 1:30, there's a major gap that would be within your ring of the, the green zone. And that, that area would be almost all completely covered with the Ford Construction Map, even at the 642-foot elevation.
Yeah. So the red area, the red ring, is given to us by the network engineer to identify possible tower locations in that search area. That, that doesn't necessarily always translate into that's the only coverage objective. They want a tower in that area to achieve certain coverage objectives.
So if you're, you're talking about a service gap that's bigger than the ring?
As you, there's a significant service gap in, in this area, even south to this area. We have two other projects in Calaveras County. There are multiple projects that are trying to achieve service gaps within the county.
But if you, if it's, if, if your service gap is larger than what the ring is, then the Ford Construction Site provides great coverage to, between 11:30 and 1:30, radiating out from your, your ring, that you wouldn't get from the project location. There's, there's a major, there's a major gap in, in, in coverage from your project location. I, I don't see any comparison of this many people within the area that you're using as a significant gap. Would the comparison of the number of people who would gain coverage or not have coverage as between those two sites, even at the 642-foot level?
I, I have to agree with you. There is a significant coverage gap throughout the county, and there's multiple projects to achieve the coverage objectives and to increase the network capabilities of, of, of the carrier throughout, throughout the county. We have multiple projects in place that we're actively working on. I believe we submitted one or two within the county at other locations. So just because this location would not service north of Ford Construction, that doesn't mean that down the road in the build plan, there is not something to, to actually cover that in the future. There is, if, if we do, if Ford Construction is the only site, there would still be a network gap in, in coverage to the south. That would still need to be addressed.
Looking at the, at the existing coverage, where there is apparently quite a gap, and it just doesn't seem to me, if, if there was a way for the computer to provide us with how much land is covered by the two different proposed towers, your, your proposed tower and the Ford Tower, it looks as if it'd be about equivalent. I understand, but they're now saying that the, the ring is just a part of the significant gap.
They would still need to have some tower to the south to cover the, the gap in coverage. The residents in that area, that Ford Construction is not covering, would still require a tower somewhere to be placed, you know, maybe it's not at that project location, but still relatively nearby to, to cover that still gaping coverage.
If, you know, for your existing coverage map, the, the first map, is the area of your significant gap totally included in that map?
The, the existing coverage. So at page one?
Yeah.
Yes, this is the current, the current coverage that is on air currently.
I understand, but is that, I'm trying to, now, I was always thinking that was within the ring was your area that you were looking for a significant gap. My understanding is it's, it's broader than that.
The ring, I believe, represents the areas that the engineers estimated you could potentially have a tower that might address their coverage.
Correct, and there's a lot of...
What is the range of a tower? What is the?
There's a lot of factors that go into it. So density of the population, because these towers can only service so much data, so many phone calls. So depending on the population density...
But we're pretty rural.
Depending on the topography, that's, that's a big one. If there's a lot of trees and hills, depending on the height of the tower.
Just give me a ballpark idea, because you're above all the trees with your 90-foot tower. What is the range?
It's, to give you a ballpark, and might not answer it, but these sites are line-of-sight. So where the antenna can see is where it's going to cover. And if there's, if there's topography issues, I, I can't, I know you're trying to, I can't answer that without, because of the topography. If I say it's 1,000 feet, and you go and say, no, it's longer because...
It's not in line-of-sight, okay? I'm, I'm proposing that you can see the distance, roughly how far away from this?
If it was flat.
If it was perfectly, let's call it flat.
Yes. In line of, it would be the line of sight.
Really? Yeah. So what's the distance from a tower? I mean, I know you can answer roughly what the distance is.
Whatever the line of sight is from that top of that tower that you can see would...
Hundred miles? Are you saying you can get service? So I'm trying to do, exactly, but you're, you're saying line-of-sight. And so I'm wanting to know, realistically, how far can you expect to get service from that tower away from that tower?
So realistically, for this site in particular, the area that we could actually realistically taking in as much data and making the most educated guesstimates, not necessarily guesstimate, because there is a lot of data that goes into it, analysis, would be represented in, in the maps. So whatever this distance is in, in the, in the green would be the, the coverage distance that this tower would cover.
So, so there's definitely still a void close to the Ford, so it sounds like we're going to have to have another tower at some point in that area. So I'm just wondering why...
The, the answer is maybe, depending on what kind of population is up in that area. They've identified a population density sufficient enough here that it justifies all of the expense, starting with the analysis and drawing up plans and submitting applications and coming before hearing bodies, and ultimate construction, that it justifies pursuing a facility in this location.
Sure. It's like lock and tinted to me. Very near.
Is there more that you wanted to add? We interrupted you.
Sorry, sorry about that.
No, but if there's any other questions, I can definitely answer them.
I think there will be more questions, but let's, let, go ahead and take a seat for now. I think there probably are some questions for our planning director, perhaps about the response from the local fire agency.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The typical process is when an application is filed, we do a routing to all the necessary agencies within the county, and their comments formulate some of the conditions of approval, or trigger additional investigation through the environmental document. You had them here yesterday, and you can see what some of their concerns would be. In this particular instance, I don't think we got anything more than what would be the typical 4290 type of requirements. And so I did not see anything from their comments that made me think that they have a increased concern for, for this type of facility at that location.
So they didn't comment on the driveway? They just provided the standards for a drive?
Right, and that's what they would typically do. So what, what was going to happen is now that when a, the plan gets submitted for, for a plan check, then it goes through, you know, the fire marshal will then go out to the property and take a look at all the information provided, and may require some additional mitigation or other considerations.
And then they were supplied with what the grade was?
Oh, yeah. I mean, all that information would be on a, on a submitted plan at that stage.
So preemptively, we did, we did look into the fire requirements for that access in terms of the, the grading and everything. The proposed drawings on A1 The proposed drawings on A1 shows us widening the, the access road to 20 feet for, for fire. Also calls out that it wouldn't be no more, no, it would, a maximum of 20% grade, which is a requirement, and it would be paved, not gravel, to allow for a fire truck. There's also a fire turnaround, a hammerhead that was designed at the top of the facility to accommodate a fire truck being able to drive up to that location and service the facility in the event of an emergency.
20% grade is pretty tough for a fire truck.
Well, it, it calls it out that it maximum. We'll eventually, most likely have to do a grading plan when we're in building and safety to, to identify it, but that's the maximum and that, that it could be in order to comply. But we would go during our building process, we will go through the proper channels with the fire department to get their approvals.
I understand. So the location that was selected for this, I assume that's not a natural flat spot platform? That that's graded, something that you guys are going to create?
There, it's, it's not completely flat. There is some rock that needs to be graded out, but it's, it's, it could be worse in terms of the grading. There is some flat parts there at the top of that.
Well, it looks like you're having to do a cut to create that and that there will be a bank behind it. And so the site looks challenging. I assume that you chose that because that's where there is a sort of natural, not leveling, but less steep slope area. But it places this closer to the neighbor than it does to the person who is saying that they're going to allow it on their property, which just feels completely wrong. That if somebody is choosing to put this on their property, they should be one who experiences most of the detrimental effects of it. And so is it possible to relocate this tower closer to the residence and that, so further north and east to create some more distance to the neighbor?
As you can see, the access road going up to the proposed facility, and we call out no more of a grade of 20%. If we go more north to that residence, you can infer that it's much lower, which then is going to compromise coverage to the south and, and potentially to the west, depending on where it's at. So it would significantly cause a detriment to the, to the coverage objective.
How many feet? The difference?
Yeah, what is the elevation difference from the, down to the residence?
Yeah, I know. My eyes just, it's, you know, I'm relatively young and I, I can't, I can't read it on my eight and a half. But you can, you can see a significant amount of hash marks. You can see a significant amount of hash marks on A1 sheet, but it does call it out there. And I can, I can get that information for you.
Yeah, I'd like to know what the difference is between proposed and the, and the residence. 75 feet?
Seventy, oh, no, no, no.
75 feet?
Looks like-
An elevation difference? Wow, that's-
So, so, yeah.
These are five-foot fine toward the major contours, is that correct?
Major contours are five foot.
Yeah.
They show one foot.
Right.
So I mean, I guess I can see why it is there if you're losing 75 feet.
Yeah, that's significant.
But it is kind of difficult to, I get why he's okay with it. This guy is, right? Because wow, I get all the money and I have none of the effect.
I, I would say that as a property owner and, and dealing and talking to property owners in terms of putting towers on, on their facility, one thing, I mean, there is, they're going to be serviced periodically, and especially for somebody that lives on site, that is, that is a nuisance potentially to them, that they're coming onto their property at any, at any given time. So I, I would, to say that the property owner is not inconvenienced, I, I don't think is a fair statement. There is other inconveniences, inconveniences that-
Not suggesting he's not inconvenienced.
He does, they do live there, they live on site.
As much as his neighbor.
Oh, I, I got, somewhere I got the impression that he, that the property owner lives elsewhere.
No, the property owner lives on site.
He probably can't even see from his back window because it's 75 feet above his house. And, and what is the elevation of the neighbor relative to this? Is it pretty even across?
That's only that.
Five feet.
Okay, so I mean, it's certainly affecting this gentleman more than the people doing it.
Yeah, the neighbors.
So moving it west would not be an option?
Moving it, uh, north would be the-
Away from the, in other words, on the opposite side of the property.
You mean east, closer to the river? As a reference point?
Closer to where the road currently exists, or currently where you intend to put the road with?
Or to the east, I guess.
There, it would, it would lose some height, but it is, if, if the planning commission wants us to explore that, we can, and as a consideration, if we, if it's possible to move it there, and we can look into that, yes.
I see a neighbor to the west, but is there a neighbor to the east if you move it to the east?
It's the river.
It's the river?
No, no, there's-
Oh, there is, there is, sorry. It is closer to the river, but there is a residence there.
Okay.
I, I misspoke, thank you.
You're not going to slip and get away with anything?
It is further away from the majority of the, of the residences. Would be a more fair statement.
But still not out of the view of the neighbors that are looking down on it.
It, it would be, if we were to move it closer to the road, we can consider that. I, I think we could potentially find a solution there. It would lose some height, but I, I think it's something that we would consider. But it would be, we're closer to another residence to the, to the south in doing so.
Yeah, we can, we get back to the fact, shown in your original application, that there are houses in the four compass directions within 500 feet.
It, it's difficult, and I think, I'm hoping the planning commission understands that there's a lot of considerations that go into this. And there's, it's not possible to make everybody happy. If we go to another location, another residence, you know, alternative two or alternative three, it's, there's other residences there as well. And there's other people that are going to raise their concerns as well. Unfortunately, I wish we lived in a world where there is a perfect solution that you can thread a, thread a needle through, but, but there's not. And so we have to really consider everything in terms of looking at these, these projects. Wireless infrastructure is becoming more and more of something that's important. When people are working more remotely post-COVID, the need for not only reliable service, but reliable broadband service is becoming more and more of a necessity. When you're zooming, doing FaceTime, this, this becomes more of a need and it's the world that we're, we're living in. And unfortunately, there isn't a perfect solution that makes everybody happy, but it is a necessity, it is a utility that is required in our modern life.
But you'll know that not a single person wrote to say, "I have problem with my service and I am so looking forward to having a tower in my neighborhood that will improve my service."
And, and even online, actually, there was a few people that chirped about it would be nice to have it, but there were not as many, nearly as many that chirped about not having it.
I, I, I understand that concern, so I, and I appreciate Commissioner Parker saying that there were some people that wanted it. I would say usually the negative ones are always going to be the most vocal.
Of course.
So just want to make that clear.
We're aware of that.
Yeah.
It just seems like there's a lot of, lot of concern about this location, even if we take out the things that are outside of our purview that, and don't take them into consideration, there are a lot of other concerns about this site. And certainly, there's things that could be done. We, we can investigate mitigations that could improve the situation. But there are plenty of things that are going to be pretty hard to overcome with the kinds of mitigations available to us. So we would welcome suggestions from you on how you could make that installation more palatable.
If it's okay with the planning commission, we can potentially come back with looking at relocating the facility closer to the driveway, away from, from the residence to the west, as well as perform a noise study encompassing the generator and look at what those noise requirements are and if, if noise mitigation measures are required, you know, implementing some of those as well. Is that something that the commission?
Well, that'll be a part of our discussion later on.
Right.
Okay.
I, I'm thinking we should probably take a lunch break, give everybody a, a moment. I appreciate everyone's patience, been a long morning for everybody. So if we could take 50 minutes and that would bring us back at, well, close to 1:30, if we could plan on being back here at 1:30, then we'll resume this discussion.
Is there more discussion that needs to be had in your minds?
There will be, there are probably going to be some significant discussion.
What we think about this, so there's going to be plenty of discussion.
There won't be another opportunity for the public to comment, although it's possible that a commissioner might have questions for somebody about things they said earlier. So the planning commission is back in session and ready to talk a little bit more among the commission. So is there somebody who has?
Couldn't I take first?
Sure.
Sure.
Oh, that's, that's something else. I think we need to, to go through this a step at a time. First with the aesthetics portion of the initial statement that was produced under CEQA. On page nine of the initial statement, it shows less than a significant impact with mitigation for substantial adverse effect on a scenic vista. And under C, non-urbanized areas, which by the way, we are in that, that, under state law, that means a community of 50,000 or more, more than we have in Calaveras County. Non-urbanized areas substantially degrade the existing visual character or quality of public views of the site and its surroundings. Now, A is, would not be appropriate, scenic vista, because of where you have to have, basically it needs to be blocked by the, yes?
Let me interrupt you just for a minute. Okay. So I believe that we have determined that this, this meeting will get continued to another date.
I haven't.
So I, because we know that there will be modifications to the resolution that will not be made on the fly, that doesn't mean we won't complete our discussion today. But also I need, were you able to?
For a little while.
Okay, so-
It's taxes, I have to-
Okay, so it looks like our meeting is going to end at 3 o'clock today because one of our commissioners has a previous engagement and we don't want you to, either any of you to have to live with what only three of us come up with.
Right.
So that's just for anybody who was waiting to find out what the situation was.
I'll try to cut down my comments.
Yeah, and, and-
You're welcome to say.
Yeah, you're welcome to say, of course.
Of course.
Yes.
All of that can be-
Yeah, well, as the opponent will be-
And you would be notified of it.
Yes, you'll be notified.
So really summing up on, on the CEQA thing, I really questioned whether the, the aesthetics question under C, which is the non-urbanized area substantially degrade the existing vista, I think that should have been a potentially significant checkmark with all the requirements that would flow from that. It, that you don't need a blockage. You need to be from publicly assessable sites to, to have the effect of the substantial degradation of the existing visual, but-
Commissioner Ladish, could you tell me what page that is?
Yeah, that's page nine of the initial statement. But what can be significant here is that CEQA has its own standards. We, Calaveras County, has standards that we have to comply with CEQA when they are applicable. But what we're looking at, and, and by the way, I think under CEQA, a 90-foot monopine or a 90-foot generic broadleaf tree would constitute a scar or a blemish upon the, what used to be a view of a non-urbanized area. But as I say, for Calaveras County, if, if we don't need to look at CEQA, which we wouldn't if we were going to deny this, the Calaveras County standard is for the granting of an administrative use permit, which is what the context we're in here today. One of the findings, necessary findings, is that it will not potentially affect the general welfare or the safety. Now, general welfare is a broad term. It's used twice in the first part of the U.S. Constitution. It isn't involved with public access or view from a public street. It is looking at the benefit of all people who are, have any sort of relation to the action that is requested for the administrative use permit. So starting with the next door neighbors and flowing out from there, the general welfare is, is a question before us under the Calaveras ordinance. Now, let's take a look at that. The application itself indicates that with, with less than 500 feet, there are houses, residences in all four directions. There's, as far as the question of aesthetics go, we've had many people tell us about the effect on their views that would happen from a 90-foot vault tree tower, that it's an eyesore, that it would be, a blemish would cause stress to them in, because of the rural setting that they've been, they've chosen. Now, as far as noise pollution goes, we had the addition today that indeed there is a need for a, a generator. And we've had very telling comment from a person who's worked on generators as to just how loud that can be. And I think what's important here is that we not look just whether the noise level violates the Calaveras Noise Ordinance, but does it violate what people expect in a quiet environment? And there've been no decibel measurements given and provided to us as to just how loud, without the generator, how loud would it be at the property line? During the day or at night, or, excuse me, really what we haven't had is how quiet it now is? What's, what is the noise level without this project at the property line? We've had, and the applicant did not respond to an invitation that made at the last meeting to provide better screening visually and screening for no- to provide better screening visually and screening for noise on the equipment that's currently suggested, or the equipment before adding the generator. Fire danger has been raised by the citizens and we are in a very high hazard fire safety zone, severity zone, and it's, there are serious questions that's been raised as far as whether the local fire department would have the ability to fight the fire, what would be the effects if the fire were up at the top of the tower and a high winds were blowing embers through this residential area in this high, very high fire hazard severity Other questions, other issues have been raised, such as the microplastics, we have somewhat of an answer to that. Property values have been brought up and there were one, Mr. Slavich provided a citation and one of them that caught my eye was the Journal of Real Estate Finance and Economics does a study encompassing very broad areas, not just in the United States, but all over, that concluded, and this did not appear to be anecdotal to me, there are lots of formulas and such in this article that I couldn't understand, concluded that if, if a property that's being put on sale is within sight of a cell tower, that it would tend to lose 9.78% of its market value because of that. Now, I don't know, well, Mr. Slavich also provided a table showing the Zillow values of all the properties within 1,500 feet of the tower site, if they could all see the tower from their location, which I assume not all of them could, but if they could, the value decrease would be more than a one and a half million dollars total for those properties. Realtor Vicki Fikes submitted a written statement with her, from her experience in the local area, that the real property would sell for approximately 10% less, so somewhat consistent with the, with the study in that journal. So certainly, I think, there is a potential for this project to affect the general welfare of the people in the area and, and including the safety. Now, with that, then the question raised under federal law is, well, do we have substantial evidence to support a denial? If we take that evidence and, and apply it and deny the administrative use permit, is that substantial enough? Well, the, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, which is the circuit that applies to us, has, has indicated that substantial evidence is actually more than a scintilla of evidence. A scintilla is a bare trace of, of very minor presence. And so I would say that it's clear that we have substantial evidence and that's confirmed by looking at the City of Anacortes decision from the Ninth Circuit, where it says, "The city can consider the proximity of the tower to residential structures, the uses of the nearby properties, the surrounding tree coverage, foliage, et cetera. Safety and aesthetics can be a valid ground for the decisions by a local agency to deny permission for a cell tower to go up." And in fact, in the City of Anacortes case, they specifically looked at what, what the evidence was supporting the denial and then included the detrimental effect on surrounding properties, and they did not assume any radiation-related causes for that. The pole wasn't completely screened, that it would interfere with the scenic views. So, and, and those were all things that citizens claimed in the case to support the denial and the Ninth Circuit decided that that was substantial evidence, it was more than the necessary scintilla of evidence to support the denial. So then, where do we go? Well, where there is more than a scintilla of evidence, and this is again from the court's decision, to support the disapproval, the court then looks to the availability and the technological feasibility of the alternatives. And the burden then has shifted to the cell provider. In this case, it shifts to the contractor with T-Mobile. So what's their burden? Well, first, they have to establish a prima facie case that the service gap exists and it only has to be, in this case, a gap in T-Mobile's service. That's very clear under the Ninth Circuit decisions. I recognize myself, I think there is a service gap in T-Mobile's service here. And so let's assume, I don't know the other commissioners who would agree with me on that, let's assume there is a service gap. Then what, what does the provider have to show? Well, second, the provider must, and this is a quote, "Show the manner in which it proposes to fill the significant gap in service, show that it is the least intrusive on the values that the denial sought to serve." Here, the denial would be on the basis that it has the potential to harm the general welfare and safety. The provider has the burden of showing the lack of available and technologically feasible alternatives. And I meant, I stressed technologically because they didn't, they took care not to say economically feasible. They say, "Could you do this?" Sometimes the consideration of costs do enter into the Ninth Circuit analysis, but when they set the standard, they're talking about technological feasibility. Now, I believe the, the original submission of Vertical Bridge did not meet that standard. First one only had four alternatives, now there's six, filled with summary statements with no substantiation. There's, there was very little documentation and, and at that point, they had only provided the, the coverage maps for the selected site. Now we have coverage maps for several of the sites and was established today that the, the elevation of the proposed tower is 636 feet at the base. So I'd like to concentrate on one of the sites and that is Alternative Three, which is the Ford manufacturing, the construction company site. It, when you look at a topographical map of that area, it has a, a great elevation difference. They, the, I have to find my, my notes here, make sure I'm not going to misquote anything. The, they show a elevation of 642, I think it is, feet for the tower where they would put it, at the Ford Construction Company elevation. Have they really developed the, what we need to know about the Ford Construction Site? Well, we know from a topographical map that the Ford Construction Company property goes to more than 800 feet. We don't have any documentation of, really of any contact with the Ford Construction Company. We don't know what Ford Construction Company's plans would be, except for the fact that one of the members of the public, Mr. Hamilton, did contact the responsible party at Ford Construction Company who said, well, he hadn't heard from Vertical Bridges, but Ford would be interested in providing a space for the tower. But we would need to know a lot more information about where it could go, according to Ford Construction Company, and, and how high it could be. We would need more information as to a revised coverage map showing where the alternative site might be and where, and what coverage would result from that. Point out that the site, Ford Construction Company main site, is zoned M2. That's general industrial. And from our statute, or from our ordinance, the M2 zone is intended to provide areas for manufacturing, processing, storage, and similar industrial uses, those which, including those which may create some objectionable conditions, subject to regulations and et That's quite a contrast from a residentially zoned property and that is actually in actuality surrounded by residences. So I think it's important to keep in mind that I'm not bound to establish, to prove that the Ford Construction Company is, site is better than the proposed site. What we are doing here is checking to see if Vertical Bridges has established that it, its burden of proof required under federal law of showing that the manner in which it proposes to fill the service gap is the least intrusive on the values that a denial seeks to serve, primarily the general fund. So my opinion, they have not proven that it is the least intrusive in, on the values that our denial would, would serve. And if we deny, we have no need to, right now, reconsider the CEQA conclusions in the initial study. I think there are so many questions that have been raised, questions about the initial contacts with the prospective alternatives, questions as to whether these were the only reasonable alternatives, questions as to the relative desirability of the, of the various sites. And that, right now, I would recommend that the planning commission grant the appeal, deny the administrative use permit, and offer a fresh start. I think having a fresh start with a new application where all these questions and missing substantiations and objections would be considered as a, as a whole. So we don't need to say, oh, well, maybe if we move it just slightly on the, on the current property, if we provide more, or at least some studies with regard to the generating that just came into the picture today. If we looked at, considered the maps, the coverage maps for each one of the locations and I'd, just like to break in on that, was that, the maps that were provided today, if you, if you superimpose the same circle on the project location proposed coverage that's on the alternative site location for Ford Construction, I think you would find there's certainly the same amount of dark green indicating reliable coverage in that map as there, with Ford, as there are in the, in the current proposed location. There are just so many questions that I think with a fresh start, now that Vertical Bridges knows all the concerns of the property, nearby property owners, and knows the concerns of the, of the planning commission, I think it would be good to have a clean slate and start all over again and where we could really take a look at the big picture from the very beginning without supplemental this, supplemental that, and, and other possible mitigations. So under these circumstances, I recommend that the planning commission grant the appeal and deny the administrative use permit, certainly with the opportunity to consider it, consider a new administrative use permit. That's fine.
That was a lot, that was a lot. Made a lot of sense though, to me. You know, here's the thing, guys, I just have a hard time, you know, like I said already several times, getting over the fact that you weren't totally honest with us to get at the get-go. And I think this could all been, you know, overlooked had you been more forthcoming with us, but you weren't. And so that makes me wonder if you're going to be once you start the project too. And so I'm inclined to agree, to be honest with you.
So I also have not been convinced that you have met the threshold for the least intrusive option available to you that would serve your purposes. I'm not as eager to throw the baby out with the bathwater here. I am willing to see additional information, but I would want to see very thorough analysis of all the alternative sites. I find it hard to believe that I am going to be convinced that this site is the best alternative, but I'm not, I'm not saying that that's not possible and it's not possible to mitigate most of these things, but I do think that it's a pretty high bar. I think it would take some real effort to get there. But it sounds as though my willingness to at least engage further on this and see if you want to tell us that you have found a better site and has been superseded by the fact that three of the planning commissioners are prepared to deny the, or to uphold the appeal today and deny the project.
I want to add one more thing. This may end up being the spot, okay? I'm, I'm certainly willing to be swayed because we do need, need more coverage for, for T-Mobile. So I don't think there's any of us here that don't agree with that. We'd all like that. I think even the people that are appealing this would like to see better coverage. would like to see better coverage for everybody. It's just the way... Yeah, no, I understand. Okay, so, I just don't like the fact that you gave us just a few. First, it was four, like, like Tim said. And then you added some more, but one of them was outside your, your zone, so it really wasn't a good add. Um, I, I want to see more options, and if, if you can say, look, these are other options, but these are not gonna work, and this is why, then maybe this spot does turn out to be the best spot, okay? And I know the federal government is hell-bent on making sure that everybody has wireless communications, period, end of story. We, we're kind of handcuffed when it comes to this. But if there's other spots that are better spots to do it, that's what we want to know. And I'm not convinced that you did the research that you needed to based on how, uh, little information you provided us. I mean, it's like you thought you were just gonna come in here and slam dunk this thing. We're a rural community, and we live here for a reason. We don't allow stuff like this to ruin our peace and serenity without a fight, really. It's not, we don't, it's not even a fight. It's without making, uh, a rational argument on your side. And there's no argument here at all. You, you gave us false information, and it really bothers me. And I think it bothers all of us. So, I hope that if you do decide to move forward, that you do a more thorough approach at this and, and bring us something that we can say yes to. Because I think we all want to say yes, we just can't do this.
Do you have anything to add? So, so, does somebody want, what are, where do we want to go from here? And maybe, does the applicant want to speak to this about?
Um, just to clarify, it sounds like, um, a further analysis of alternatives is, is what the, uh, the planning commission is requesting before they consider that we've met the burden. Um, and, and this, Commissioner Parker, you said that this may be the site, but we need to do further analysis. Um, what I'd ask, as opposed to denying the application, is since there is, uh, opportunity or openness to look at further information and further analysis of alternatives, um, to request a continuance so that we can provide the information that, that is being requested of us. I understand the, the concerns with Ford Construction. We, we identified why it, it doesn't work. Um, we can do further analysis based off of the recommendations that the planning commission has raised at today's meeting. Um, but I, I do ask that if the commission is willing to continue, and definitely have indicated that a new application, so there is a, a willingness to continue hearing, uh, this project to keep it open so that we can have sufficient time to do that, uh, that due diligence that's being requested.
You weren't here the first meeting, I don't believe, or were you?
I, I was, yes.
You were. There, I suggested various things that you could come forward with. Um, and you did reply with the broadleaf tree, uh, option, um, which we would have to, and, and a new application would have to decide between the bottlebrush monopine and the broadleaf generic. But, um, it, not everything was replied to, uh, from a month ago. You've had a month, and I think there was enough at the first meeting. You certainly could understand every, the concerns that were arising in the community. And, uh, it, uh, it's, it just seems to me that a fresh start would be the answer. A fresh start being you, uh, communicate and actually get contact with all the proposed, uh, alternative sites. You, again, look at your studies to see if there can be other alternative sites that could be proposed. Um, to, to go back now and say, oh, well, okay, let's look at, uh, site number, uh, two. Well, we had this, but...
Not, not to look for other alternatives necessarily. It seems like there's a, a significant, and was brought up that, you know, the zoning and, and use of the Ford Construction Company. We did have, you know, that, that was a site, and it was a, a consideration. They were interested, and we're not saying that they weren't interested. We're saying that there was some considerations that prohibited us from developing a site there. What I'd like to do is see if we can go back and provide those documentations, specifically look at the higher elevation that you pointed out, and, and, and address that specifically.
To be clear, that we are not directing you to only look at the Ford Construction site. That, to our cursory glance at this, really, we've spent a couple days on it. And we've spent a lot more time reading, obviously. Um, it looks like a viable site. Yes, it will have challenges, but I think if you look at the challenges associated with your currently preferred site, that they may be even a bigger hill to climb, so to speak.
And I'm not proposing that these that you've already given us are the end-all, be-all. Maybe there's better. That's what I'm suggesting.
And again, on, on the fresh start, so much of what we were provided, we were saying, oh, PG&E will require this. Well, do we have a letter from PG&E saying, oh, I understand you're considering the, the, uh, the Ford Construction site, and if you do that, you will need to do this? Uh, you say, oh, it's gonna be costly. Well, did you provide us with an estimate of what the cost would be?
I, I would like to do that. I would like an opportunity to, to do that.
The Ninth Circuit has said that the, that the provider has to deduce evidence allowing for a meaningful comparison of alternative sites. Um, and, uh, excuse me, I'll put on my glasses. And the, the county or city that's involved was not required to take the provider's word that these were the best options. But that's what you were asking us to do. And that, that's not a new provision of law, and I know that you must be aware of it. I, I kind of joined Commissioner Parker's concern that, uh, he thought maybe if you just told us the facts as you see them, uh, we would just accept it. We, we're not bound to do that. And we're, and we're, we're responsible for the general welfare. I mean, we're responsible for recommending to the Florida supervisors, uh, you know, what's needed for the general welfare of this county. And we have to have substantiation. Now, yes, you could come forward now with more substantiation, but I, I, I still think a fresh start is the way.
If I could make just a couple of comments.
Sure.
You know, this isn't substantive with respect to the elements of the project, but it focuses on the Anacortes case and the Ninth Circuit standards and burdens that they put on various parties. I'm very familiar with the Anacortes case. I've litigated that, uh, most recently in 2021 with the city of LA. Um, the, the standard is true to, up to what you said, but then it goes on. If you don't want to take the applicant's prima facie showing of an alternative site analysis at face value, if you don't want to accept it, then as I pointed out on page five of my March sixth letter, the burden then shifts back to the public agency to say they must show that there is some potentially available and technologically feasible alternatives if they reject the alternative analysis provided by the applicant.
But that only arises if you've satisfied your prima facie, if presented, prima facie case, uh, that this, what you have presented to us is the least intrusive. And I'm, I'm very confident that you have not done that for the reasons that I endlessly went into. Uh, it, it's, we don't have that burden that you're talking about unless you've satisfied your burden after we've supplied our burden of, of substantial evidence. So, we, we come up with a substantial evidence. You need to provide that it's the least intrusive version and with, with proof. And in my mind, you haven't done that. Only if you do that do we have the burden of saying, oh, well, look at this. I mean, sure, we might look at Ford and say, that's it. We don't have to, we don't, we don't have that burden here if you haven't satisfied your burden of the prima facie.
I, I hear what you're saying. Not surprising, two attorneys may have a different impression of what the responsibilities are. Um, I've seen hundreds and hundreds of alternative site analysis, and in my experience, this alternative site analysis presents the prima facie, the at-first glance, first impression showing that, that we did our due diligence and we analyzed various, um, sites. If you're now telling us, for the first time, we're hearing from you that there are certain elements that are missing, and then you're not going to give us an opportunity to go correct those as part of this application, then, um, I, anyways, we would, we would ask for the opportunity to do that.
So...
I, just one moment. I, I do want to point out that I think there was plenty of indications at the last hearing that we were not convinced. And certainly, we were trying not to take a position because we had not heard your response yet. So, you had the opportunity to provide us with a very thorough response. And I think that the public gave you every indication of what their concerns were. And, and I didn't see you, I, I heard a lot of willingness to look and do further analyses on this site, to look at other mitigation measures. You know, you continued to offer more things. But it, but it feels like you waited until there was no other choice. And, and you've got to understand that that's frustrating to us. We've spent a lot of time on this. And what we really want to do is say, go build a cell tower. Everybody would love to have better coverage. This is a great location. And all of us have great angst over this location. We feel like there has to be a better alternative out there. We could be proven wrong. But we, you haven't met that threshold yet.
And I want to point out that at the last meeting, you were specifically asked to provide substantial evidence that an alternative site would be available, reasonable, and less intrusive than the proposed site. We just don't think you've met that standard. It isn't, we haven't, our concerns aren't new. I think it was very clear from the last meeting what our concerns were and what we needed, and we didn't get it.
I understand your position.
Yeah.
We have a different perspective.
I understand. So, um, I would like to get a little input from our legal counsel and planning director as to the viability of, um, if they were to, we were to continue this and they were to come back to us with an alternative site, could we process that? We would have to re-look at CEQA again, do another...
So, a new, right, I mean, a new, a new application would be, it would be totally starting new. The CEQA analysis would have to be redone, and we would, we'd be looking at the new evidence that came in, the new project description. I mean, obviously, we would already have to do a little bit of something with the generator that just came in with the, is a change to the project. Um, I mean, it's up, it's up to the commission. If, if the commission wants to allow them to further develop their alternatives analysis, um, then we would still have to between now and then. If, we would probably revisit the CEQA analysis with the generator added, um, and any mitigations that are offered for certain right now, and, and develop that. Or we could alternatively wait until maybe further mitigations are offered and then develop that into another project description. It would sort of depend on what else is being offered.
That sounds like muddy water.
But it seems to me like they're not really willing to look for alternate sites.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not, uh... I, I don't, I don't...
At least they're not saying that.
That's what I was gathering from it. You're pretty set on the sites that you, why don't you let us know if that's true or not? Because that's what I was gathering. Are you saying that this is it, and there's no other possible sites that you can?
No, we wanted to meet the burden that was presented in terms of showing that this is the least intrusive. If it's not, then that's a different discussion. But we were asked to meet a certain...
If your position is that you will come back and convince us that this is the least intrusive site and that you're not really open to doing further analysis and finding out that there actually is a better site, then I would have to defer to all of the commissioners. But I don't hear a willingness to hear this again if you have already predetermined the outcome.
If there's another, if there's another location, sorry, I apologize.
Okay. And, and then they can say whether or not I represent their opinion. But if really what your intent is to go and bolster this argument without real willingness to look at alternatives, I think my fellow commissioners are less interested in hearing that. Uh, but we'll let them talk, too. Uh, if what you're going to do is go out and really make a diligent effort to see if there is something that could work for you, then I think we are willing to, to let this go on. But let's hear...
Pretty clear. That's what I thought. My suggestion is there are no other alternatives.
Well, I think... They would have to include, uh, consideration of alternative site for me to go forward. But I, I think it would, I think we got a, a new application. And then the CEQA, a new application with all the facts that have come forward to us, including facts in favor of Vertical Bridges about, uh, uh, the opinions about whether there's a microplastics problem and this sort of thing. If that all could come, start over again. Start over again with an analysis of, of, of exactly what is your area, uh, the gap, uh, what sites might be available there, um, everything from the get-go.
Yeah.
I think it would be a lot cleaner for you, it certainly would be a lot cleaner for us, than to add to our stack of papers on, that have come in on this, uh, on this application.
Yeah.
Uh, saying, oh, well, they're not saying this anymore, they're saying this now. Oh, well, now they've added a generator here, but we haven't seen the, uh, the environmental effects and this sort of thing. I think, I'm hoping that at this point, a lot of the, uh, matters, I'm not gonna say hidden matters, the matters that had not come to light before now. I hope there aren't many others, and that it would be easier for all of us if you started over again with a new application.
Commissioner Laddish, if I may just interject now, if we start with a new application, it's not coming directly to the planning commission unless appealed.
Oh, oh, no, I, I understand.
It would be, uh, within the purview of the planning director, but I think you've set, set some parameters as to what we're going to be looking at. Um, uh, having said that, I wanted to go back to your comments regarding aesthetics, especially, um, uh, under C where you, um... Did you want that to be checked as a potentially significant impact?
That's what I said.
Rather than, less than significant impact because we have provided mitigation for it?
Well, the only mitigation that was suggested was it's gonna look like a pine tree.
Right.
Well, it would need to be three votes to, I would think we'd need three affirmative votes, such as affirmatively reject the CEQA. We don't have to...
No, we don't have to decide.
Yeah.
Right.
But, but I, I suspect that with a, with a fuller analysis and more mitigations and this sort of thing, I, it's just, my inclination with what we had was that it would be potentially significant.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm certainly not trying to bind the planning department its decision in, in, in any future.
Uh, going forward, I want to give you some dates. Um, today's the fourteenth. The next planning commission meeting is on the twenty-eighth. And the next planning mission meeting in April would be the eleventh and the twenty-fifth. So, the twenty-fifth of April would put us at about, uh, um, a month and maybe two weeks from now if we go to the end of April. And it could go beyond that depending on how speedily we get, uh, information from the applicant and, and so on and so forth.
We're not asking with these...
No, no, I, I'm just providing you with...
We're not asking.
I'm just providing you with the dates in case, because you may have...
What's possible.
Right.
And we don't know what their timeline would be for...
Yeah, I, I'm just giving you that.
I think what we're asking from you is to say to us that you are not going back simply to convince us that this site is the one... to convince us that this site is the one, but actually to evaluate alternative sites. And you're asking us to go ahead and continue the, the hearing to whatever date works to give you enough time to do that. But if you are bound and determined that this is the only site worth evaluating further and you're just trying to find some way to tick those others off that will convince us quickly, I, I think I'm not hearing much willingness from these other folks.
I would like to have an opportunity to take an objective view and look at other alternatives and bolster that, and if, if there is a better solution, and maybe we can work with, at that point with, with the planning staff and.
Alternative sites or alternatives.
I need to disclose something that our director has given his resignation, and you won't be working with him going forward.
Understand.
So.
Sorry, understand.
If that's.
Complicated.
Yeah.
I would like an opportunity to, to look at the landscape and, and provide what you are requesting.
Alternative sites or alternatives?
Alternative sites, alternatives, we, we were asked a few, a few things to, to consider.
It seems to me that what you're saying is that you could provide us with all the information that you would provide in a new application.
Well, if.
It could result in that or it could not.
What I'm asking for is if.
Judging that.
A little bit more time before we start the clock and start a new application that we submitted this, I don't know, eight months ago, nine months ago to get to this point, if we could just have a little bit more time before we reset the clock and start a new nine-month, ten-month process.
Okay, well, I have some more questions then, so, because these, these are things that I would want to see you address. I have a question. So did they put fire retardant in the greenery on, how do they mitigate fire concerns that they're having? Because that, that could check a box for me if there's some kind of a, it doesn't burn, because I've done a lot of UL testing when I was younger, and that's something that they look at is, is putting retardant in things and smoke development, things like that. Do you know?
I, I would want to get.
Doesn't matter if you do, just.
I, I would like to get more details on the manufacturer specifics. I don't, I don't want to misspeak on it.
And I appreciate that. And so another thing is, if for some reason this site does become the site, you said that you would be willing to do some sound attenuation, be it retaining walls of some kind, is that something that you believe that you're open to doing also?
I.
Wherever the site is?
Yes, I believe the applicant would be.
What about vegetation? Because block walls are quite ugly.
I, I, I think we would be open to considering all of those measures.
These are things that I know our citizens are concerned about because that's why we live here.
But that's, those are specific concerns that were raised a month ago.
Yeah, they were.
And we didn't get it.
We, we did add green slats to, before it was a chain link, and we did add some, some mitigation, which was the, the green slats on the most recent version of the drawings. It sounds like that, that's not sufficient enough, and so.
How many times do we need?
Block would be much more fire resistant, much, do a better job of blocking sound, you could do plantings around it. And it's something that we have required of previous power projects.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, another note to the applicant is that if the planning commission should deny the AUPN and uphold the appeal, you have the right to appeal that decision to the board of supervisors, so it doesn't end the process at that particular point. So just, you know, just for you to know, purely informational, I am not.
We all live here.
I am not, I am not.
We all live here.
I am not subverting your authority. This is what I would tell the other side if this, if the, if the, if the outcome was adversely, would adversely affect them as well. If you had said we're going to approve this, I would tell the people in the audience, you have the author, the right, just like, you know, Mr., uh, uh, no, the, the appellant had the right to appeal the decision that I made, they have the ability to appeal the decision that you made, one way or the other. That's purely code.
And then you're asking for more time. I would ask that if we grant more time, that you will not be claiming that the time has run out for us to make a decision on this project.
Yeah, if you want to sit on the record, you're waiving any applicable shock clocks, and we are not, of course, going to see that a shock clock actually applies to you.
Yeah, yes, I think we're comfortable with that, and if we want, if you would like us entered into a tolling agreement, I, I think that our client would be open to that as well.
We want to find a solution.
Well, if we want to find a solution, and if you're willing to basically start over, even though you're not filing a new application, start over with substantiating everything that's been questioned and taking a fresh look at everything. In other words, if, if you are willing to provide the equivalent of a start over on this, then it's, it's a lot harder to say, forget it, go home, start another thing. But if all we're talking about is nibbling away.
Right.
And say, well, we'll mitigate this, or we'll take.
There won't be a third. Yeah. Well, you know what I'm saying? So, so please address these concerns.
And I'm sure the commissioner is well aware of this. So if, if they came back in, I don't know, two weeks, three weeks, a month, and said, we have a new location, we're going to have to start the analysis all over again anyway. So that new site has to be analyzed, we have to look at some of the other. So it would be similar to starting over without actually starting over.
I, I think if there was another location that would require, outside of this property, would require a new application at that point.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which may end up happening anyway.
I mean, the, the thing is, is that, bringing the generator into it at the last minute does put us in a position of already having to change, or at least, at least, like, reanalyze the project description against what's already been submitted under CEQA to see and do the recirculation analysis. So that part was going to happen. It would have been a simpler one.
So really, we're, we're, we're looking at, if we can get the same clarity and forthrightness and detail from you by continuing this as we would expect in a, in a new application, it's not as, not as neat and tidy, but I think it would be, you know, I don't like to cause anybody any extra cost or time, but, but we would really need to be convinced that that's basically, that you're basically, start taking a fresh look and starting over again.
I, I would like that opportunity.
And I'd like to see this for each one of those locations, and not one blown up more than the other.
They're, they're not.
And they're not. I was, I, I.
I was looking at it, I don't think that it still looks like it.
It's deceptive because of, wait, some have circles, some don't.
But this is helpful to us to help make our decision.
And show the circle on each one. That was what threw me off on the scale.
Yeah, and provide the number of customers.
Customers, yeah. And just, it's unclear to me now what your area of significant gap of service is. I thought it was the circle. Apparently it isn't. Is it broader than the maps that you're providing us?
Well, based on the green, it's much larger.
Well, no, I mean, what's it considering?
Yeah, but this is what they're saying it's going to accomplish.
Right, yes, it's much larger.
So it's much larger.
I am convinced that you have a service gap.
Yeah.
There is no question there.
There's no question.
Congratulations.
Anybody that lives in this community, I live next to a tower and have terrible service.
I think the other thing that would behoove you is just looking at what your maintenance plan is, what your fire protection plan is, you know, all, all of those sorts of things, and coming to us with your proposed mitigations on any site for those issues. And if you're on an industrial site, it will, the scenic concerns will be much smaller, and we maybe won't have to talk about the bottle brush tree so much.
The fire concerns and everything.
But, but answering as many questions right up front so that the public has an opportunity to comment on those and so that we can feel like, oh, yes, we have all the information we need right here, because we really do want to find a solution.
And how long do you think it would take for you to do this thorough re-look at the situation?
I, I would probably.
Actually, you probably don't have to reply to that right then, no?
Yeah.
I mean, it's going to be more than two weeks.
Yes.
And so we will hear at our next meeting what your response to that question is, so I don't mean.
I'm happy with that timeline, yes.
Commissioner LaDish, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'm moving it, we continue. Are we officially?
Date uncertain.
To a date uncertain for the consideration.
So continue on calendar. Continue on calendar. Okay, so it'll be noticed if there's a new.
And believe it or not, I'll second it.
Same old. And I'll third it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. So passes four zero with one big.
Thank you.
Thank you everyone for your patience and willingness to hang out with us.
Yep.
Where the heck did I put my, yeah, my agenda?
I have, I have started so many moments in the last two weeks, and where the heck did I put this?
Okay, so while we have a second item on our agenda to further discuss the zoning code update, I think we are going to defer that to not next Wednesday because we have canceled that meeting. So it will be two weeks.
Perfect.
On Wednesday. So let's find a date certain. You want to pick a date certain?
Yes.
Twenty-seven.
Okay.
I'm, I'm making that up though, so somebody should check me. It's the twenty-seven. Thank you.
March twenty-seventh.
Yep, March twenty-seventh.
That's where item B. Item B is.
Item B, yes.
So are we going to continue that, that or did we set the dates?
Yeah, so we, so our, we are already set up to.
Oh, okay.
To discuss the zoning code on that date.
I just didn't know if we have to do a motion to continue.
We haven't been doing motions, but we have been stating that it is continuing, continuing to be continued. And then I think we'll all, I don't know if we have items also for that Thursday.
And that, um.
We do not, we do not at this time.
Not Thursday, no.
So we will probably want to look at continuing the zoning code to that Thursday also.
Twenty-seven, twenty.
Yes.
Yes. Anything that our planning director would like to say? Besides, oh my God, that was exhausting.
What an excellent.
I, I, I kind of anticipated this is going to take quite a long time, because when I saw the deluge of communication coming in, I knew this was going to be a very challenging day and a very, a very long day for us. But I think we came to a workable resolution, just for the record, at the very, very onset of this application many, many months ago when.
You know, people are here, are a little worried about.
About this item after we've closed.
Oh, you've closed.
The hearing on this.
Okay.
Sorry, I just feel like.
Good.
So Commissioner reports?
I'd like to say that it's been a great pleasure to work with you personally.
Thank you.
That, I think you, today you showed how good a sport you could be when under attack.
So.
And also, and also did a great job of fending off the attack, I thought.
Yes.
So anyhow, it's been a pleasure knowing you, and I hope to see you again. And I don't know where your job is taking you, but I hope it gives you everything you want.
I hope so too.
I concur with that. It definitely has been a pleasure working with you. You're a very, a kind and thoughtful person, and I can see that you do care about our community, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I'll certainly miss that lovely accent, which isn't an accent to you, ours is just a cruder accent.
Yes.
I would just say that we're going to have some big shoes to fill.
Yeah.
It's a high bar, and I hope that we can get somebody that's close.
Well, Peter, who was the former director, is, is going to come back as an interim director. So he's, he's been local since he retired, and he's got family here, so he's, he's going to be stepping in pretty seamlessly, I, I, I assume.
Is that a sure thing?
Yes, I met with, my meeting yesterday was actually with Peter.
Oh.
There's, there's no retiring in this town.
No, he has.
You can go.
Especially if you've been the planning director.
He has, he has. He has officially unretired. He will be here three days, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, days for which we have a supervisors' meeting or planning commission meeting. So he'll be here Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday because of his limited hours, because, you know, he can only do so many with, with nine sixty or whatever that category is. But he was well aware of all the projects that's been, that have been going on. He started the GHG before I got here, now he's going to.
Thank you.
And that's going to inherit that GHG going forward and some of the other projects. We kind of went through that yesterday, so.
All right. And we are adjourned at, ooh, we, two forty, we made it.